Are off, and in conformance of the open meeting law, I'm reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. For those of you who've been here, you know what the deal is, but for those of you who are new, when you are here to speak and support or in opposition to a project, we are interested in hearing new information. So if somebody has already stated your, the reason for your support or the reason for your opposition, please put your name and address on the record to acknowledge that you were here. But please use your time at the podium to give us new information. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Your motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the first extension, I'm gonna have to recuse myself, so if you would...
Let me call it into the record. This is case BOA number seven nine six seven six four one thirty-seven Amory Street. Please put your name, address on the record and tell us why you're expecting, you're requesting an extension.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Sharon Small from Urban Edge Housing Corporation here for one thirty-seven Amory Street. We're requesting an extension because the project is a one hundred percent affordable rental housing project, developing in collaboration with the Community Builders, the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation, and the Boston Housing Authority. We've received funding from the City of Boston Department of Neighborhood Development and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. We're in the process of selecting a contractor and an equity investor, and with a one-year extension, we'll be able to finalize the financing and start construction on the project.
Thank you. And just for the record, let me note that Mr. Fortune has recused himself. Thus, we need all five members in support, so may I have a motion, please?
Is this expired yet or no?
No, this is not expired.
Motion to grant a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck. Do you want to send me the next one? Calling the next case, BOA seven one six two nine seven fourteen oh three to fourteen oh five Dorchester Ave. Is the applicant here?
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, the business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass.
So please tell us what your extension is based on, your request for an extension?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're requesting a one-year extension of the board's decision for this address. We have some issues with the financing and we had to switch lenders, so it took a little longer than expected, but we are moving diligently to secure the financing to complete the project.
And the permit's still active?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA four five zero three five one eleven eighty-one to eleven eighty-three Bennington Street.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Lauren...
Address for the record, sorry.
Attorney Laurence Catino, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston.
So tell us why you're requesting the extension?
We're requesting another extension. This is an interesting matter. The federal government actually had placed an order of forfeiture on this property, which prevented our clients from purchasing and proceeding with the development financing on this. The forfeiture matter's been resolved with the U.S. Attorney's Office and financing is currently in place. The matter is expected to close within ninety days, and our client is prepared to finalize plans and permits and proceed with construction immediately on that.
And this, and this appeal is still active? There's, it's not expired or anything?
It's set to expire March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. I'm sorry.
Two thousand twenty?
Two thousand twenty, yep.
Yep, two thousand twenty.
May I have a motion then, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling, calling the next case, calling BOA seven five five one five eight one fifty-one to one fifty-three Meridian Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Laurence Catino with a business address, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. We're requesting a one-year extension on this matter as well. The clients are ready to proceed with construction and pulling the permit. There was just a small holdup with construction financing.
Again, this one expires on March two thousand twenty.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA seven five seven four five three six fifty-three Cummings Highway. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with a business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'm requesting a one-year extension in this matter. The decision is set to expire February sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Shortly after the decision this board was entered, there was a judicial appeal, still in the midst of the judicial appeal. Would like to get a one-year extension to keep the zoning relief active.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Excuse me. Calling the next case, calling BOA six eight five four four six thirty-nine Washburn Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Derek, is this related to the next case?
Yes.
Two separate.
Two separate.
Two separate, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. We're here seeking a one-year extension of the board's decision for this address. With regard to Washburn Street, we ran into some issues with environmental and the soil contamination, so the remediation is taking a little bit longer, but I think we're about ready to go.
And when does it expire?
It already, it already expired.
It expired in July of two thousand nineteen.
But because of the remediation issues that we've been experiencing, we got the approval from BPDA, and we're working with ISD to scrub away the soil.
Derek, we didn't have to make a denial, put a denial on this one because it's expired already. The permit should have been here before us, before the expiration date.
Madam Chair, there were several reasons why we were unable to get here. One being the National Grid issue with National Grid strike with regard to the strike that National Grid had. We couldn't get into the, they weren't issuing permits to get into the ground, so we couldn't get soil contamination remediated, and we're running into issues with...
Yeah, I'll pull it closer side. ...of the property. National Grid, National Grid's done for a long time, and we weren't able to confirm this work.
Okay. So this looks like it's extenuating circumstances because we are just, are not prone to extensions for already expired permits, but given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
And that was completely beyond your control, so may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next, the next case, calling BOA six five six zero four three thirty-four Dix Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. Madam Chair, again, we're seeking a one-year extension of the board's decision. Similar circumstances that were beyond our control with regard to the strike of National Grid and digging in, and then we had some issues with the financing, so we're, we're ready to go.
This was also in May of two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so same issue, let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just, just a note, please, there should be, somebody should be keeping an eye on this just so that it keeps active because, you know, it puts us in a difficult position to come in and then retro, give you, give you a retro extension.
Understood, Madam Chair.
Okay? So this is a note to everybody out there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next case?
Calling the last case on extensions, calling BOA three eight two eight nine seven one oh four Canal Street.
Good morning, Mad...
Address for the record, please.
Sorry, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ruth Sulman with Nixon Peabody on behalf of the petitioner.
I'm Erla Laji, Somnath Hospitality.
We're here for a further extension. Pleased to announce that Somnath has finally signed a contract with Choice Hotels to open a Cambria Hotel at this location. That is what has taken some time, is the negotiation of a contract with a flag. We expect to pick a contractor in the next few months and begin construction in two thousand twenty.
And so this is your second or third extension?
This will be the third.
This is the third, and I hope final.
And final.
Yes.
Doesn't expire until February twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Good luck.
Calling board final arbiter, calling BOA eight nine two eight nine eight two sixty-seven Old Colony Avenue. Hold on a second. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with a business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this application was approved by the board on November nineteenth of this year. At the hearing, I incorrectly stated that there were sixty-five parking spaces associated with the building, which will contain fifty-five dwelling units and commercial space. The plans that were submitted at the time showed sixty spaces. We went through community process showing sixty spaces. There are, in fact, sixty spaces. I'd like to correct for the record that there are sixty spaces rather than sixty-five parking spaces, as was stated at the initial hearing.
Okay, may I have a motion to re, to confirm that, that the approval was for sixty spaces?
Make, make a motion to confirm the approval was for sixty spaces?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight nine seven seven one seven two five oh nine East Fifth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with a business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this matter was approved April ninth, two thousand nineteen. It is a new three-story, three-unit building at five oh nine East Fifth Street in South Boston. My client, as the site plans are being passed out, this is seeking approval from the board to effectively shift the building two point seven feet further, placing it at the front lot line. It was originally a two point seven foot setback there. There's a building to the rear of this, there was a companion case that day for five oh nine rear East Fifth Street, as can be seen on the site plan. The space where the new building and the, the lot for the building in the rear meet is a bit tight. My client, as he's, you know, ready to begin construction activities, would like to create some additional separation distance there. The building particularly is close to the exit from the building in the rear. The...
So, sorry, so you're proposing to move it two point seven feet closer to the front lot line?
Correct. Put it on the front lot line.
Put it on the front lot line, is that modal?
There, it is not modal, but there was a cited front yard setback violation for which the board granted a variance, so essentially he would like to shift it from a modal because it's a small lot and it's a small building, but to reduce the rear of the building to create additional space, that would make the building unacceptably small, so he'd like to take advantage of that two point seven feet at the front.
Mr. Kandel, did you have a chance to look at the plans?
I did.
And then everything is, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Space for a board final arbiter, calling BOA nine zero zero nine seven three four eighty-five Ashmont Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Glynn, I'm the owner of four eighty-five Ashmont.
Tim Johnson, architect, five ninety-nine East Broadway, South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, the five-unit building at four eighty-five Ashmont Street was approved by the board on January twenty-ninth of this year. However, the project started as an eight-unit building under an ERT application. The approved project is a four-unit addition to a single-family dwelling.
So the total is five units now?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So this is to confirm that, in fact, the project is a five-unit development?
Yes, under a different permit type, an ALT.
Under an ALT.
ISD is...
Okay. And what were the, and have any of the violations been eliminated or decreased?
Yes, Madam Chair, we've decreased from eight to five with no new violations.
But have they, the violations that we approved, have they been decreased in any way?
Yes, Madam Chair, the original eight...
Request for relief, okay.
Yes, the original eight violations that you approved on January twenty-ninth, we have reduced to five under the new ALT application that ISD is requesting that this project is clarified as.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know, Mr. Kandel, you've looked at the plans already.
I did, they're out.
And my apologies for not checking in with you.
Calling the next cases for G card.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling BOA one zero two zero seven one six, twenty-one Hudson Street. This is a new amendment to erect a one-story addition in the rear and expand the existing first-floor restaurant. Violation's Article thirty-two, Section four, this is in the G card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Bonnie Tian from sixteen Chesterfield Street, Revo. I'm on behalf of the client, David Shum, at twenty, nineteen twenty-one twenty-three Hudson Street.
Uh, thank you. Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we do have the BWSE approval letter.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case for G card, calling BOA one zero two one two one two eighteen Union Park. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a single-family dwelling, remove all existing interior partitions, install new floor joists, new mechanicals. The violation's Article thirty-two, Section four, this is in the G card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Lacass, Lacasslaw, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the homeowners. This is a request to change occupancy from a three-family to a single-family and a complete renovation of the property, which requires a G card.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we do have the BWSE approval letter as well for this one.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero one eight nine nine three eighteen Newbury This project is an interior fit-out with new storefront, HVAC, all mechanical. Violation's Article thirty-two, Section nine, this is in the G card enforcement. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Don Wies with the Dane Torby Firm, seven forty-five Atlantic Avenue here in Boston. With me is Zach Richards of Bowler Engineering.
Thank you. Um, Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have the BWSE approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the last case, G card, calling BOA one zero one nine three three four two hundred to two oh two Ipswich Street. This is a, erect a eight-story, maximum height ninety feet, one hundred and five thousand square foot building, one hundred and eighty-four-room hotel with ground floor restaurant, eighty-two parking spaces, and one below-grade level. The violation's Article thirty-two, Section thirty-two dash four, this is under the groundwater conservation G card. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Don Wies with the Dane Torby Firm, seven forty-five Atlantic Avenue.
Is this approved previously?
It was not. It was on the schedule before, but because it had not gone to the BPDA, it was deferred and then refiled.
So it didn't need any other relief?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, we do have the BWSE approval letter, which was updated last evening to reflect the one-point-two-five-inch capture requirement for this project per the BPDA's recommendation for recharge for projects of this size, which is a hundred thousand square feet or more, and we also have the no-harm letter for this project as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter from Boston Water.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm gonna call the nine-thirty hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty?
Sixteen Stanley Street?
For the record, calling BOA one zero 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 five two one sixteen Stanley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass.
What are you requesting, counsel?
Requesting, um, deferral of this matter. We, there was a little change in the plans in the interior. Violations do not change. We reduced the bedroom count and took the living space out of the bedroom. So the bedroom count was reduced due to that, and the plans were similar. Smiles, then we haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of February fourth.
We see you on February fourth at eleven thirty.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Counsel address, please.
Uh, the address is thirty-six forty Sprague Street and thirty-eight forty Sprague Street in Hyde Park.
For the record, calling BOA one zero one eight three four seven thirty-six to forty Sprague Street. Companion case, BOA one zero one eight three five zero thirty-eight to forty Sprague Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulginie, ten Forbes Road, Braintree.
Tell us why you're requesting a deferral?
It's a, with an accurate advertisement, so the number of units were not advertised correctly, so we just had to have that corrected.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Um, we have February fourth.
February fourth at eleven thirty?
Or January? We can do the last date.
We could do last January if you have it.
January twenty-eighth.
January, January twenty-eighth at eleven thirty.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA one zero one nine zero one one twenty-two to twenty-four Woodbine Street. This is to combine parcels and to become one lot and erect a four-family townhouse style on a vacant lot. Violation's Article fifty, Section forty-one, off-street parking, screening, and buffering five feet minimum. Article fifty, Section twenty-eight, a four-unit townhouse use is a conditional use. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, lot width minimum required is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, lot frontage minimum is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, lot area for additional units is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, side yard setback is insufficient, and Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. The owner, the property just stepped out. I don't know if she wants it back. If she wants it, she...
Now, go ahead.
We're here today seeking relief to combine parcels and erect four-family townhouse-style units on the vacant lot. The zoning sub-district is a three F, four thousand. The lot area is seven thousand five hundred eighty-four square feet. The zoning violations are as follows. It's conditional, the four house, four-unit townhouse styles is conditional use. The lot width, we are combining the lots, the requirement is forty-five feet, but with the combination of the lots, that's seven point nine, so I think that violation was given to us.
Incorrectly cited, yeah?
Yep.
So that, therefore, frontage should be good?
Exactly.
Okay.
With regard to the FAR, the required FAR is zero point eight. We are proposing one point one three.
Okay. And then tell us about the parking and, the parking?
We have one parking space per unit.
And what's required?
Um, one and a half.
One point five, so that means you'd have to have five spaces?
That's correct.
And there's no way of to accommodate the, the fifth?
The fifth one, no.
No? Okay.
Um, the front yard violation requirement is twenty feet. We have ten.
Is that modal?
That is modal. Side yard requirement is ten feet. We have eight on one side and thirty-four on the other side with the parking and the driveways. The rear yard setback requirement is thirty feet. We have fourteen point five, is what we're proposing.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we did have an in-buddies meeting.
Oh, hold on, I can, mayor's office will talk, give us all that information.
No problem.
Uh, how were the plans, Mr. Kandel?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted an in-buddies meeting and also they met with the neighborhood groups several times. We like to go on record to support the project. Right now, the, it's currently a vacant lot. Neighbors expressed that it's currently an ISO. There's also two units, six-unit buildings at three dash five Woodbine Street, so it seems to fit with the character of the neighborhood as well, and again, we like to go on record to support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pratik Dubey from the Office of City Council, Kim Jenny. My name is Pratik Dubey from the Office of City Council, Kim Jenny. Our office would like to go on record in opposition to the proposal based on concerns raised by the Nine Streets United Neighborhood Association and Project Right regarding the design not matching other homes in the neighborhood, the number of units in excessive, uh, the number of units is excessive for the size of this lot. The parking plan does not lend itself to use by the owners.
I'm sorry, what was the third point? One was design, one was the excessiveness? What was the third one?
Uh, the third one was the parking plan for the property does not lend itself to use by the owners.
Okay.
The flat roof lends itself to concerns regarding stability and snow accumulation during winter months, um, and insufficient green space, so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at Large and East Side B. George's office, and she would also like to go on record in opposition.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I'd like to see a plan, like, presentation of plans.
Because I was looking at the BRA's recommendation too. And I was just thinking that a lot of these issues that have been raised could be addressed through design review. And so may I have, so I think that's...
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the building...
Adjacent?
Adjacent to this parcel?
Yep.
I mean, it's a nicely-designed townhouse-style building with parking around the rear. It looks like a nice setback from the street. Do we have any idea, do you have any idea how far that setback is? It's hard for us, for me to tell, but is that ten feet or is that within the twenty-feet?
That's within the twenty feet in the modal. We're coming right up.
Yeah, because he's coming in with modal, so.
Okay.
Counsel, do you have handouts for us to better understand what's being proposed?
I do.
Have to say the acoustics in here are so much better, aren't they? Almost feels like people are shouting at us.
You don't want to do that.
Thank you. Because downstairs, we were struggling to hear. Thank you. This one.
Counsel, one of the representatives brought up, it doesn't look like the, the building doesn't look like it's inferring the community.
They're, they're on Woodbine Street, as the Mayor's Office says. There are several apartment buildings across the street.
This is in Vine Street?
No, Woodbine.
Woodbine, sorry.
That's okay. And then next to it, what Mr. Gero was just talking about was a two, a split duplex that was just recently done. It was done very nicely. And the owner of that property is the owner of this property as well, so.
Well, that's why I'm a little confused. It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood?
I, we think that it does. We think it lends itself to what's going on in the neighborhood. I mean, there are some with the mansard roofs, as the one next to it. There are some pitch roofs. There are some flat roofs. There are multi-flaners.
It's, it's a very, very kind of housing type.
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, most of the buildings are two stories. You have proposed, oh, no, that's three.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, we do have the letter of support and one letter of opposition.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm sure, I think there is a motion on the table from Ms. Small.
Yeah.
Are you going to go with that motion? Are you going to withdraw that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to see some, well, oh, um, motion approve, providing there is BPDA design review, and I'd like to see durable exterior materials.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, um, please, Derek, um, sorry, Derek and Jeff, robust, please. Okay?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 982-435-198, Woodrow Avenue. This is erect a three-story, three-family dwelling on an existing vacant lot. Violations are Article 60, Section 40. Off-street parking, design, and maneuverability. Article 60, Section 41. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9. The lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. Business Justice 51 Dobson Road, Breach, Mass.
Yeah, go ahead.
We are here today seeking relief to erect a three-family dwelling on a vacant lot with three parking spaces. Zoning sub-district is 3F 6,000. The lot area is 5,557 square feet. The violations are as follows. Off-street parking, maneuverability. We have three spaces in the rear. Conformity with existing building alignment. We are doing modal. We are lining it up with the other houses on the street. The lot area, as I said, requirement, what we have is 5,557 square feet. Required FAR is 0.8. We are proposing 0.93. The front yard setback is ten feet. We are proposing eight. Side yard requirement is ten feet. We have seven on one side and twenty-two on the other.
So this is an oddly-shaped lot, then?
Yes, it is.
It's not a regularly, not a regular rectangular lot?
That's correct.
And so you're proposing to have your driveway only on one end of the building, put three parking spaces in the rear?
That is correct. That is, that driveway is existing as well. Because there used to be a three-family on the property.
And there's no living space in the basement?
Nope.
And tell us about the bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and the units are approximately 1,600 square feet.
1,600 square feet, oh, good-sized, good-sized rooms. Is there a roof deck proposed?
No, there's not.
Okay. Mr. D'Amico, this, it looks like, um, can you just check if the maneuverability works? And, yeah, does it work?
Yes, Madam Chair, Lady Members of the Board, Bob D'Amico, ETD. I have checked. It's a little tight, but it works.
It works. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Selesin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had an abutters meeting for this project, and the only issue on this property was between 198 and 200, there is a small, tiny sliver with a tree on it. The neighbors were very upset about that piece, and there is an argument about ownership, but we'd like to support this project, and we hope that they can work it out amongst neighbors. Thank you.
We're keeping the tree.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor, Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pierre Ellie. I'm actually the owner of 200 Woodrow. I am not in support with the findings.
You're in opposition of this proposal?
I'm in, I'm in oppose.
Okay.
It so happened that the owner stated that eight feet of my property belongs to him.
And that, that gets resolved in land court?
No problem.
It doesn't get resolved here, okay? But thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? For the record, did you say that that tree will be maintained?
Yes.
Okay. So let's just see. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the continued BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-0294, 1301 Blue Hill Avenue. This is a demo in existing building located at the end of 1261 1299 Blue Hill Ave. And construct a new mixed-use building at 1301 Blue Hill Ave by combining two lots into one lot. The violation is Article 60, Section 16. Coffee shop takeout restaurant is conditional. Article 60, Section 17. Lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 60, Section 17. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 17. The height is excessive. Article 60, Section 17. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 17. The front yard setback is insufficient. Article 60, Section 17. The side yard setback is insufficient. Article 60, Section 17. The rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 37. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. With me today is Rick Schmidt, who is the architect on this project. So Wellington at 1301, this proposal, this proposed project's actually located 1297 to 1305 Blue Hill Avenue. The zoning is Neighborhood Shopping 1. The lot size is 16,476 square feet.
I'm sorry, it's, what's the lot size again?
16,476 square feet.
Okay.
The proposal is to build a new five-story mixed-use building. There'll be thirty-nine residential rental units, three ground-floor commercial spaces, and forty parking spots. The violation, zoning violations, coffee shop is a conditional use. We really weren't going to put in what the use was for that space, but Mark Joseph at IST suggested we did, so that's where that came up.
So it's, and do you have a vendor for it?
We're, we're working, not only through the community process, we're actually trying to work with a local vendor to see if we can get somebody in the neighborhood.
And so for, for today, it's just to have a coffee shop, not for takeout?
Exactly.
Okay.
FAR in this neighborhood, one is allowed. We're at 2.67. Height, thirty-five feet's allowed. We're at 49.9 feet. Side yard is 7.5. We're at eight. Rear yard is 20. We're at eight. And parking would be required would be 44. We're at 40. That being said, it, it should be noted that this proposal underwent an Article 80 review and has been designated, has been designed in accordance with the city's compact living policy. That BPDA approval was back in October.
So tell us about the unit count?
Sure.
And the unit sizes?
As I stated, there's compact, this is a compact living, so the one-bedroom, one-bath is 555 square feet. Two-bedrooms, one-bath are between 805 and 825 square feet. Three-bedroom, one-bath is 930 square feet. And this went through a very long community process. And I've, you guys, in the, the handout that I provided to the board, I provided a letter of support from Representative Russell Holmes, who...
So let me ask you, um, so three, so these are compact, um, you be, are you proposing any shared spaces?
We have.
For the, for the, for the residents of this building?
In addition to the, yes, and also we have designated that shared space also to be allowed to be used by the civic organizations in the neighborhood on a reservation basis.
And so the designated shared space, is it programmed in any way? Is it fitted out in any way, or is it just space?
It's shown on the second-floor plan, which is a 1.2. It's in the center of the building.
Okay.
And what we've got is a multi-use space. So it serves as essentially the living room for the building. Near the, uh, the elevator, as well as it's space that can be reserved by community groups if they wanted to have a meeting there. It's adjacent to a common outdoor deck that's 450 square feet. In addition, we have storage units throughout the building that are supplementing the stores that may be in a larger unit. So for instance, there's storage in the lobby for packages, and then there's some storage units on each floor through the building.
And how many of these units are affordable?
Designation actually is, they will be, um, five, five of the units will be affordable units.
At what percentage?
So seventy percent AMI.
Okay.
I, I have some questions about the commercial space. So you have a coffee shop identified for one of the spaces, and then you have two more spaces, so is, is it fourteen, fifteen square feet for the middle space, and then four forty-five for the other space? Am I reading that correctly?
So, so the, if you started on the left of the drawing, the area that we would call a coffee shop is 890 square feet. The central commercial space is fourteen, fifteen square feet. And then the smaller one to the right is 445 square feet.
And the only spot that you have identified right now for a want is the coffee shop, correct?
Correct. I mean, that was, you know, when we went through the community process, that was something that the neighborhood was interested in. As I stated earlier to the, to Madam Chair, we kind of, we were waiting for our refusal letter, we were having a conversation with Mark Joseph, and he said he would like us to list a designation as to what that use would be, and we put down coffee shop. It may turn into be something else, but, you know, we've also talked about doing some Pilates Studios or something in the other. Those are also divisible, so if there was something bigger, we could merge those two spaces.
But neighborhood shopping allows those kinds of uses.
Exactly, yes, yes.
It's the, it's the coffee shop that's a condition.
Conditional use, correct.
Okay. And then the, and loading for the other two, so we, those are unknown, so if they're going to need deliveries, is there loading off the street for those?
There is. So inside the garage, you can pull down, and there can be loading there for the building.
And it's tall enough for delivery vehicles?
Yes.
For, like UPS and everything?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And is, this is an elevator building, okay? I'm looking at the rendering on, on the, on C5, is it CS2?
CS2, yes.
Yeah, um, it looks like you're pretty close to the property line next to Frugal.
I know.
The question becomes, what happens should Frugal get developed to all those windows at that property line? People will...
It's currently the same ownership for the entire block?
Oh, I know, but sometimes people sell properties, you know, that might possibly happen. So how, how, how will those units be protected in the future?
I would imagine there would have to be some sort of step back on that side of the building, on, between that, to your point, because it becomes a fire issue too if your building is so close.
So your sidewalk, your side yard setback, did you say was eight feet?
That is...
Eight is required, and you're providing 7.5?
Side yard, 7.5, and eight is proposed, correct?
And eight is proposed, okay, so you're within that side yard requirement. And, um, does it look like you have a window?
So are there, are these balconies on the front of the building?
Yes.
I'm trying to explain, okay. No, they, are they recessed, or are they protruding out?
They're both, they recess in five feet and they project out a foot.
Project out a foot, okay.
And how are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Any more questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Selesin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I've attended the public meeting with the BPDA who hosted it for this property, and I've seen this property work it out with the neighborhood groups, including the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council and the Wellington Hill Association, who are all in discussion with the proponents. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Patricia Whitehead from Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association. We are in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My address with the Carpenters Union. In behalf of our most addresses, want to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. McGandemir with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. We are in support of this project. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. On March, on March 29th, the proponent filed a small project review with us. On May 15th, 2019, the BPDA sponsored a public meeting at the Matapan branch of the Boston Public Library. The comment, the initial comment period was set to conclude on May 17th, but was extended several times and concluded on July 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Do you guys still need design review?
Yes.
With BPDA design review?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA...
Uh, Jeff, and John?
Yes.
You know, again, it looks like that's a solid garage door. If you can make sure that it's less, it's more permeable, and, and it protects pedestrians so that there's some auditory or visual indication that a car is exiting or whatever from the, from the site.
Absolutely. Everyone have a nice holidays.
You too.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 995-695-142 Pleasant Street. This is to construct a nine-unit, three-story-plus basement, fully sprinkled, multifamily apartment building, including a Group 1 accessible unit on the first floor, including a four-space including four-spaced covered parking lot in the rear and demolition of an existing one-story garage repair shop. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one. Off-street parking and loading requirements, proposed parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section eight. The multifamily resident is a forbidden use in the three F D three thousand district. Article sixty-five, Section nine, a main entrance must face the front lot line. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Xizula McDermott, Coltien Miller. Twenty-eight State Street, Suite eight-zero-two, here in Boston. With me to my right is Derek Rubenoff from Derek Rubenoff Architects. We also have Jason Weisman and Kevin Coppola from the developer entity, uh, sitting behind me as well. Um, we passed out some presentation materials, uh, for the board's review, including revised plans for the proposed project. These plans are in front of the board today. They were reviewed by ISD, um, and submitted on time for the board's review today. Um, I would note that there, as a result of these revised plans, we do require one less zoning variance, which is for Article sixty-five, Section nine, main entry must face front lot line. Um, in your handout, we also have a memorandum, uh, which has a zoning chart overview, uh, substantial project modifications that were made during the community outreach process. Um, the zoning chart for the board's review is on page five of that memo. Uh, finally, uh, at tab three, we have provided letters of support for the proposed project.
So please, can you talk us through it?
Sure. Uh, those letters, if I may, do include the Jones Hill Association, as well as, uh, over twenty letters of support, including from Director Butters. Um, the, the, the property itself is about four thousand six hundred eighty-nine square feet, located at one-forty-two Pleasant. It's at the corner of Pleasant and Road Street in the Jones Hill neighborhood of Dorchester. It's the existing home, as you can see from the existing photos, of a motorcycle repair shop. Um, that's an existing non-conformity in the, in the residential sub-district. This is a three F D three thousand, so the auto body shop is an existing non-conformity. Um, again, as you can see from those existing photos, um, overgrown, barbed wire, tires, uh, tires strewn about property. Um, not a very pleasant environment, we would submit to the board. So we would suggest that that's out of place with the current and future residential context of this section of Dorchester.
So this is a three F, D means triple-decker, three thousand square feet, so... Let's talk through it.
So the project proposes to demolish that garage building and construct a new three-story residential building with eight residential units and related site upgrades, as well as covered parking at the rear for six vehicles. Um, there will also be, one of those units will be a group one accessible three-bedroom unit on the first floor. And what we're proposing to do is remove this auto body shop use, basically removing a noxious, smelly, noisy commercial.
Let's, let's just move on to what's being proposed.
Sure.
Yes, because, you know, it's non-conforming, we know that.
Sure.
We want to see what, what the, the future plans hold for this project.
So the proposal is, again, for a three-story building with eight units and six parking spaces.
Okay.
Of those eight units, uh, the proposal includes five one-beds and three three-beds. Um, that is a direct result of the community outreach process and discussions with Jones Hill, as well as Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, which we work closely with on this project.
What's the average square feet for the one bed and for the three beds?
Yes, ma'am. So the three beds, um, are nine hundred and eighty-four square feet, one thousand and five square feet. And that accessible unit is a little larger. It's one thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet on the ground floor.
Okay.
The one-beds are anywhere from six hundred and twenty-five square feet up to seven hundred and fifteen square feet.
Okay.
Um, this is within a mile, within a half mile of the Savin Hill MBTA station. Um, so those unit sizes are in line with, uh, BPDA policy on key unit sizes.
Okay.
Um, as far as zoning relief is concerned, if you'd like me to go through that, I'm happy to do so. Um, again, we no longer need that main entry, uh, facing the lot line, um, because as part of the outreach process, we reconfigured the building. The, uh, building entryway originally was facing Road Street, which is at the corner. We reconfigured it, uh, in consideration of the community feedback and now it's facing Pleasant Street. The other six items of zoning relief, as, uh, Mr. Secretary read out. Um, the first is a multifamily dwelling is a forbidden use in the three F D three thousand sub-district. Uh, we would suggest that this MFR use is much more conforming in this area than in an auto body shop.
Let's talk about the zoning.
Yep.
Okay.
Additionally, I'm just, as to why the, why the...
Oh, I understand.
The multifamily use is, is, um, being proposed.
Yeah, I think, I think what, um, because I'm, I've always been, um, kind of, um, um, the, the triple-decker zoning is just a very special kind of zoning and so I just kind of was interested in how this, uh, varies from it. How does it actually reflect what the, what the design, the old, old designs were or things like that?
So it, it actually comports with the buildings around it. Uh, all three abutting buildings are more than a triple-decker. There's a six unit behind it, a six unit on the other side of Roach and a nine unit next to it.
Okay.
So this actually would be in, in that ballpark of what's in the immediate context. Now, there are, obviously are triple-deckers up and down Pleasant and across, but this initial, this little corner here, uh, has been built up to larger than triple-deckers.
Okay.
Um, Article sixty-five, Section nine, lot area insufficient. What's required is thirteen thousand five hundred square feet for the eight units and this is a, a little under five thousand square foot lot. Floor area ratio allowed is one point three and we're actually proposing one point four-seven. So a slight, a slight overage on the FAR, which is approximately eight hundred square feet over the allowable FAR. Usable open space insufficient required is three hundred square feet and we're proposing one hundred square feet per unit. Um, based on the size of lot in the corner, um, the corner location's difficult to cite open space as well as parking, um, which is why we're asking for the relief on that variance. Rear yard insufficient, what's required is fifteen feet and what we're proposing is ten feet. Um, and that's with our Butters at twenty to twenty-four Roach, so we are, uh, non-compliant by only five feet. And the off-street parking insufficient, Madam Chair. Requirement for six u- uh, six units at this location is ten spaces and we're proposing six spaces. Um, however, we are within short walking distance of Savin Hill MBTA. Uh, we are less than a mile from Upphams Corner Commuter Rail, the eighteen Boston dot Ave. And I would also like to note for the record that, uh, because this is an auto body repair shop, we are actually proposing to close a thirty-seven-foot curb cut at the corner of Pleasant and Roach, where there's garage bays, which will add two to three on-street parking spaces. We are also proposing to reduce the curb cut on Pleasant's, uh, on Road Street from twenty-six feet to twelve feet, which would also add another parking space.
Are you proposing a roof deck?
We are not.
You know, no roof decks, but you have unit decks.
We do have s- uh, small unit decks in order to allow for some open space. Again, um, based on the, uh, the, the, the square footage of the parcel, it's just tough to locate, um, open space. Even if we did a triple-decker on this, we would be deficient on open space and parking would be difficult.
And this is a walk-up or?
It is a walk-up.
It is a walk-up.
Yeah, it is a walk-up. That's why the accessible unit, which is being, uh, proposed on the ground floor. We're also proposing an accessible space right outside the rear entry of this, um, accessible unit. And the accessible unit will actually have a private entry from that rear lot, so they do not have to go all the way around it.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through an extensive community process, including in a Butters meeting and, um, several meetings with the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association. Um, the applicants worked, um, pretty hard to work with a lot of the neighborhood concerns, including unit count and design. Um, we would just ask for continued BPDA design review on this, but we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGuckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to echo the sentiments of the Mayor's Office in on record in support.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Josh Bloomberg, owner of one-thirty-seven Pleasant Street, directly across the street from one-forty-two Pleasant. I'd like to go on record in support. You really can't enter or exit my property without staring the, uh, repair garage, uh, and just kind of staring right at you and looking forward to a big improvement there, so I'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Calling BOA nine-seven-two-six-six-nine, thirty-two to thirty-four Tolman Street. This is to build a dormer and rebuild the front porch and extend living space into the basement. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-two. Conformity with an existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Jim Chen, five-eighty-five Washington Street, um, Quincy. Here with me is the property owner, Hu Li, of, uh, thirty-four Tolman Street.
So tell us first, is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
It's currently a three-family unit.
It's a three-family, okay, and it's a legal three-family?
It's a legal three-family.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
Um, the owner is seeking to extend the living space down to the basement and, uh, proposed to build a dormer on the third floor. So the basement will be one unit, uh, sec- uh, first floor will be another unit and, uh, well, first floor is gonna be another units. Second and third will be the third unit.
Okay, and tell us about the basement first. What's the floor to ceiling height in the basement?
Uh, seven foot six.
Seven foot six and is there, um, bedrooms or anything like that proposed for that basement space?
There's gonna be two-bedroom proposed and one bathroom.
Two bedrooms, one bath in the basement and, okay. And, um, are the utilities, where are the utilities for the entire building? Are they a- accessed separately?
Separately, yes, that's correct.
In other words, there's a separate door that leads to the utilities, that you don't have to walk through somebody's unit?
The gas meter is actually, um, in the basement where it's not a, it will not be accessible by the common, uh, area.
So it's through somebody's unit?
It's actually through the, uh, the basement unit. Unless we relocate it to the exterior.
And, um, can you tell us about the, um, the, the dormer?
Uh, the dorm...
Hi, I want to get the dormers because, uh, the house, I want to make it uniform from the other side and it could increase a little bit extra head height for the third floor because, uh, with the, all the, uh, gable roof, the third floor height is very, uh, very low.
Okay, how are the plans, uh, Mr. Kandell?
There's nothing drawn out for, uh, the basement.
There's nothing on the basement?
No, and then, there's no stamp coming out of it.
So I need a motion for deferral.
Motion, motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
February fourth.
February fourth at eleven-thirty, please make sure we have a full set of plans, okay?
Calling a next case, calling BOA nine-nine-five-six-zero-zero-eighty-two Millet Street. This is to construct a new dormer at the attic level of an existing house, extend living space, new bathroom, new bedroom, remove chimney roof to the basement.
Uh, can, can the, can the applicants, please, we are on to the next case and Mr. Kandell, we need his attention, go ahead.
Violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Andrew Hale, eighty-two Millet Street in Dorchester.
Okay, and, um, tell us, is this a one or a two-family?
This is a single family.
It's a single family and owner occupied?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
Sure, uh, we're proposing to put a bathroom on the third floor. Uh, we currently just have one full bath on the second floor, uh, and a growing family and my mother living with us, so we're trying to just ease up some of the pressure on the shower.
Okay.
Uh, and so to do that, we're, uh, putting in the bathroom and then we're also, where there's currently, uh, kind of this attic space, we're putting in a dormer to make that livable.
Um...
I have plans, was I supposed to?
How are the plans, Mr. Kandell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, um, members of the board, Christine Burndale, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We ended Butters meetings, we have no questions or comments or concerns at this time, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Um, anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And no design review, Mr. Kandell?
Uh, motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-zero-one-four-two-nine-three-twenty-five Hill Street. This is to erect a new gymnasium shown as Building Three and a freestanding sign for Boston Trinity Academy. An interior renovation to seventeen Hill Street. The violation is Article sixty-nine, Section twenty-eight, the freestanding signs are conditional. Article sixty-nine, Section eight, ancillary use of gymnasium is conditional. And Article sixty-nine, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Sean Briere, uh, Law Firm of Hackett Feinberg, one-fifty-five Federal Street, Boston, Massachusetts, appearing on behalf of, uh, the project proponent, Boston Trinity Academy. To my immediate right is the school's headmaster, Frank Guera. I'm also joined by, uh, Christian Strom of Jones Architecture, the project architect, as well as, uh, some other representatives of, of Boston Trinity Academy.
So can you please describe what's, we know, we know the school, so describe what's happening on this property.
Uh, school is proposing to erect a gymnasium, uh, which would be a freestanding building, uh, located on the same site as the current school.
It's on the same site even though it's, it's, um, it's called an ancillary building?
So...
Ancillary is usually on a different, different lot.
So...
Do you have any drawings or anything?
We do. So it, it, important to note that the school owns both the property directly across the street. So this is the proposed building here. Existing school is shown here. The school owns both, uh, this tract of land here, which is separated by the private way, Brayburn, as well as this tract over here, which is separated by Hill Street. Sorry, sorry about that.
My eyes don't go down that far.
Okay, so that's the, the gymnasium, looks like you have a steep slope in the rear.
Correct.
And so that's why you fronted it, uh, to Hill. Okay, um, so it's because it's on a separate lot, okay? Um, what's the freestanding sign?
This is, uh, Christian Strom, the project architect, he can show you the plan that has the sign.
It's a, um, just a small sign, just with the name of the school at the corner of Gordon and, uh, Child Street.
What's the dimensions?
Uh, it's about thirty inches by nine feet.
Thirty inches by nine feet?
How tall will the sign be?
So...
How lo- how tall are the footings?
It, it's not fully designed, I'm sorry, but, um, we're looking at, uh, our fence height is about, is four feet, so we don't want to be above the fence, so it'd be max four feet high at that corner.
And will it be permanently lighted or is it just a flat, flat board? Okay.
What are the materials that you're gonna use?
Um, metals.
Okay.
Probably steel.
With just like a screen printing on it or?
Uh, no, I think, um, in all it would have, um, letter, a standout lettering.
Okay.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings adequate.
Any additional questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office at Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde PAC. Um, our office wants to go on record in full support of this proposal. Uh, there was a lengthy community process, um, and the administration did an excellent job in terms of reaching out to the community, um, under the headmaster, Frank Gata, um, including Danny Tao and Georgina De Cruz. Um, they did an excellent job. Um, we held several meetings and, um, there was no real vehement opposition from the community at all. Um, they've, the Trinity Academy actually has a, uh, very competitive basketball program, so we feel the gymnasium will be a wonderful asset for the children. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez, City Councilor-at-Large, and Easie Savi George's office. Councilor would also like to go on record in support and she has also submitted a letter into the record, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor-at-Large, Michael Flaherty, comes with a record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Perez with the Carpenters Union, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, board, my name's Tom Johnston, I live at fifty Ainsworth Street. I'm speaking as a parent and a community member.
Because Ainsworth is not in vicinity, so...
Exactly, so I'm a parent of, of a student. Um, I attended all the community meetings and what would, what's still for me and I think should be noted here was the members of the immediate community who supported the proposal, who have no affiliation with the school at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you. Calling a next case, calling BOA one-zero-one-four-three-four-seven-seventeen George Street. This is to erect a three-family home. The violation is Article sixty-nine, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, the height requirement is insufficient in stories. And Article sixty-nine, Section eight, the three-family dwelling use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Derek Joyner, Joyner Development, one-nineteen B Rentham Street, Boston, Mass. I'm here today on behalf of, um, proposing to build or erect a three-family in the High Park District area. It's a two-F five thousand. The lot is six thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet and the violations are...
Sorry, what's the lot size?
Six thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet.
And is there a single family on it currently?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're proposing to demolish that?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, and for what reason?
Um, the house is, uh, it's abandoned and it's been abandoned for quite some times and the neighbors were very, uh, happy with my proposal to demolish it and erect the three-family on this, um, in this area.
Okay, so tell us about this proposal.
Okay, the violation...
Tell us about the units, unit sizes.
The unit sizes are sixteen hundred and twenty-seven square feet for unit number one. There are three bedrooms, two baths. Unit two is three bedrooms, two baths and sixteen hundred and twenty square feet. And unit three is three bedrooms, two baths, fourteen hundred and sixty, uh, seven square feet. Um, it is...
And, um, how, are you proposing parking for this?
Yes, three parking spots, one parking spot per unit and...
And is that, is that in the rear of the building?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's just see, so it's a forbidden use. What's the zoning requirement on FAR?
The FAR is point five and we're at point seven-two-one. The usable open space is five thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, that's seventeen hundred fifty per unit and we're at thirty-six hundred square feet. And the height requirement is insufficient, is two point five and we're at three stories. But I'd like to note that the third story is a gable roof as well as a dormer, so it, it blends in with the rest of the properties on that street in the neighborhood.
And is this gonna be stick-built?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's see, um, and is there any living space in the basement?
No, uh, the basement would be used for mechanical and storage.
Any roof deck?
No roof deck.
Um, of course, it's a gable roof.
Yeah.
So, um, how are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Ma- Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, representing Hyde PAC. Uh, we want to go on record in support of this proposal and a Butters meeting was held with, uh, no opposition from the community. Uh, the applicable civic association is the East River Civic Association and, uh, they had no opposition to the proposal as well. Um, majority of that area is two-family and three-families, so we feel that it does fit well, um, with the aesthetic of the surrounding area, so we want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review, very unique.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you. I know there's one more case left for nine-thirty, but we're gonna call ten-thirties. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty? Counselor, address, please.
Twenty-two Wordsworth Street.
Can you come and, why don't you come and sit up here, please? Uh, and what's...
For the record, calling BOA nine-six-six-three-three-nine, twenty-two Wordsworth Street. Name and address for the record, please. For the record, calling BOA 966-339-22Wardsworth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Lorraine Scatino with the business address at 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're here today seeking a deferral for 22 Wadsworth Street in order to be able to work with the director of butter a little bit more.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have a date of February 4th.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, sir?
362 Princeton Street. Morning, Madam Chair.
Hold on a second, sir. Hold on, sir. They're calling for the record, calling BOA 985-474-362 Princeton Street. There is a companion case. BOA 985-475-362 Princeton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Holmes. I'm attorney just recently retained by Brian Foley and Jeffrey Strom, who are the owners of the property. And I am seeking a deferral at this time because we need work. We need to do certain things. We met with the ISD with Frank D'Amato last week to get a better understanding of what the shortcomings are, and we just need additional time to rectify that.
And how much time do you think you need?
You've been saying February 4th. Can I do end of February? I had February 25th.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We can do February 25th, or we can do March 10th?
Uh, March 10th would be breathing room.
Motion for March 10th.
Okay, let's see you March 10th at 11:30.
Appreciate your courtesy. Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Address, please.
138 Trenton Street.
For the record, calling BOA 100-3594, 138 Trenton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Corey Kelleher, the address of the company who owns the property.
Yeah, you're deferring?
Yeah. It's 185 Dean Street, Norwood, Mass.
Oh, so you don't live in the house?
No.
Okay, so this is a, and what, for what reason?
Uh, we have another case coming, and I'd like to defer so the board can hear both cases at once.
Are they next to each other, or?
The same property.
It's the same property?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what date that's scheduled for?
Do you know what date it is?
No, I don't.
I don't, we had no idea what it would be.
So can we have these deferred, but we'll advertise them together? Okay, what's the adri-
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. These will be re-advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Councilor, address, please.
75 G Street.
For the record, I'm sorry, 75 what?
G.
Okay, the last case. Calling BOA 907831, 75 G Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matt Eckle, I'm an attorney with D'Argo and Toscano. The address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. I was advised this would be an administrative deferral because it was advertised incorrectly. It was advised to be re-advertised for January 28th.
Okay.
We have it, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's on the agenda for January 28th?
We have it on the agenda, I'm sorry. It's one I had to call in.
And what time?
Uh, the motion has been for postponement to January 28th at 11:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, sir?
140 East Berkeley Street. It's up to a rediscussion.
Oh, not till, can't call it till 11:30. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none, I'll call the last case for 9:30. Oh, it is?
Yes.
You said rediscussion, you said rediscussion. Oh, okay, sorry, sir. So, case BOA 957-913, 140 to 140 East Berkeley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Sean Brier, Law Firm of Hackett-Feinberg, representing the project applicant, Mings Market. As, this was the case a few months ago when we were for you, the, we were awaiting the, awaiting the appellate decision of the appeals court. We did get that decision in the interim, but that case has been further, or applied for further appellate review by the SJC. So unfortunately, the ongoing litigation between the owner and the tenant has not yet been resolved, which makes this appeal difficult to pursue at this time.
So how many deferrals have you had so far?
One.
Does it make sense for you to continue deferrals or reapply?
The applicant is desirous of getting a deferral rather than a withdrawal, hopefully avoiding having to go back.
He wants to have his toe in the water, okay? And how long do you wait this deferral for? Six months?
I think we wait at least 75 days, but at the, at the will of the board after that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We can do April 7th or April 28th?
April 7th, okay.
April 7th.
So we'll see you April 7th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none, I'll go back to the last case for 9:30. Calling BOA 101-481-567 Florence Street. This is a third-floor renovation, two bedrooms, one bathroom, small dormer for a headroom over staircase and third floor. Replacing the two-story decks and roof renovation of the bearing wall on the second floor. The violation is Article 67, Section 9. The building height is excessive in feet. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, David Collins, the property owner.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So I'm adding two bedrooms, or I'd like to add two bedrooms on the third floor. There's plenty of space on the lot, but there's no way to get up to the third floor. So I'm adding a staircase if possible. That's what I need the dormer for.
I got it right, yeah.
But it's not changing the pitch of the roof. I mean, it's changing the pitch, it's not changing the peak of the roof. It just comes off the peak.
And so this is a two-family?
It is.
Is there any dwelling space in the basement?
There is not, as of now.
Okay, yes, and then what will be the, the number of bedrooms in this second unit, the second and third floor unit?
It will be four bedrooms, two bathrooms.
Two bed, four bedrooms, two baths?
Yes.
Okay. And just, I remind everybody that they cannot be more than four unrelated individuals in a building.
Okay.
Okay, how are the plans? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Cobinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We've completed the community process on November 6, 2019. At that time, we received no opposition from the community, and we believe this project is, is not large and won't hinder the abutters in the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Please, and, oh, go ahead.
Members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor-at-Large, Michael Flaherty, Councilor to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review?
Sarah? Okay.
It's only for the staircase.
Okay, so motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're all set. The board will take a 10-minute break and will reconvene at 11 o'clock. I like this room much better.
Rare addition and change occupancy from a two to a four family with plans with off-street parking. The violation is Article 53, Section 8. A four-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient in Falcon Street. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient on Putnam Street. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 27, T-5, this is in the East Boston I-Pod. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with an address of 15 Broad Street. I have James Christopher, the architect from RCA, and Vitaly Fidosik, the owner of 137 Falcon Street. As was mentioned, we are seeking to construct a rare addition on an existing two-family structure, change the occupancy from two to four residential condominiums with three associated parking spaces off of Putnam Street on the side. This unit breakdown, which I'll go over, these are all two-bedroom units. Unit one is a duplex unit at 1197 square feet, two-bed, two-bath. All of the others are roughly in the 900-square-foot range, two-bed, one-bath. There is a utility sprinkler room in the basement, separate from the living quarters, and access through a separate stair. The violations, as was read off, it is a 2F district, and we are proposing four condominium units. The FAR allowed is .8, we're at 2.43. Building height allowed is two and a half stories, we're at three. Our front and side yard is five, where these are pre-existing violations since the structure of the building will remain. That's zero. And our rear yard is eight foot, five inches, required is 30. We would be required to have additional three parking spaces, although we are providing three. Currently, there is two existing spaces on the side, so this would allow us to add an additional space to go along with those units. As was mentioned, this is an all condo project as well. I can answer any questions that the board may have.
So the access to the parking is from a curb cut at Putnam, right?
Correct, that's an existing curb cut.
So have you seen the BPDA's recommendation?
I have, and I can't address the curb cut, it is existing.
How about the density issue? Because this is a 2F 2000.
It is surrounded, I know right next to us is a two, but directly behind us is a three-family. To the right of us, across the street, is a three-family.
So have you checked out a three-family option?
No, we went with this condo option, it was well-received in the community, Madam Chair. And by giving us these two additional units, we were able to maintain the structure. Many of the buildings are being razed in this area. We are able to keep it by adding this addition, and that helps it to support as a condo homeownership project.
And so there's living space in the basement, right?
Correct, for unit one.
And that's a bedroom and, master bedroom and a family room?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Grounds adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addressed most of the concerns of the abutters and also Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in support of this proposal, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? Or are there any additional questions from the board?
So there's, I just got a question. There's a, it looks like there's a grade change on Putnam Street between your property and the abutters.
In the back.
In the back.
Right.
And your property line is, I'm just trying to visualize it. Your property line is where that retaining wall is?
So there's the retaining wall, and then there's the parking spaces, if you can see those, and then a wall after it, and then an area for the rear abutter as well. But as you climb up that hill, it's a significant grade change to East Eagle Street. So they would be looking over our building in the top two floors.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
I'll second him.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll just put my name down as opposed because I'm concerned about the density.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 943.
711, 59 Gov. Street. This is a rec. 4-family dwelling. Violation is Article 25, Section 5. This is in the flood hazard district. Article 27, T-5, the East Boston I-Pod. Article 53, Section 56. Off-street parking loaded and quiet, none is proposed, six spaces required. Article 53, Section 8, the MFR is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 53, Section 9, excessive height. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area.
Thank you.
Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage width. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient usable open space. And Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is David Tellarico. He is the owner of the property at 59 Go Street. Also with me, Dominic Valenti is the architect for this project. Madam Chair, this property is located in the, I guess, for lack of a better geographical identifier, probably closest to Maverick Square, if I'd identify between Central Square and Maverick Square. It is, by way of context, located directly behind a series of four-story row houses that were rebuilt after a building collapse about six years ago. Our proposal would provide a building that is pretty much in scaling character with all the surrounding buildings along Chelsea Street. This proposal would involve a four-story, four-unit building with proposed roof deck access by headhouse. This is located in 3F 2000 district. Each of the units are approximately 875 square feet, all two-bedroom, two-bath. Upon completion, this would be intended for homeownership, so each of these units would be part of a condo association. The secretary indicated that this was located in the flood hazard AE. AE not being the flood zone A. We are looking at the possibility of reviewing this through an elevation certificate, based upon the proximity, or at least the elevation, that we believe could be adjusted for this type of building. In addition, obviously, we are not looking for any relief under the flood provisions of the zoning code. If we are not able to comply, then the building obviously needs to be modified in order to comply. We are proposing-
Sorry, what is Bosconcom review, oh, conservation?
Conservation, yeah, so anything within flood hazard would require Concom review.
Okay, and tell us about the parking?
There is no parking proposed on the site. This is a very tight site, shallow lot, as well as a very narrow, but very consistent with the lot sizes in the area. This particular neighborhood does not have the typical 2,000-square-foot-sized lots, 100-foot by 20-foot in width. This one is 19 by about 50 feet in depth. Because it is a shallow lot, we are seeking relief for rear yard, although the requirement would be reduced from 30 feet, as required in 3F 2000, down to 10 feet. Our setback is at 8.3 feet, but again, consistent with the alignment of buildings along that side of Go Street. By way of relief that we need under the code, Madam Chair, we are proposing multifamily, although three families allowed by right. This use is quite consistent in this part of East Boston. As I mentioned, the entire block of Chelsea Street is all multifamily, at least four units or more. As you go from Chelsea all the way down to Maverick, this would simply be an extension, as you turn the corner on Go Street, of those uses. But we have lot size, although 3F 2000 does permit the construction of a single-family dwelling. It is a buildable lot to 1,032 square feet. It would be under the requirement, as required, under Article 53, for the additional units that we're proposing. We do meet the requirement for lot width, there's a pre-existing condition of 19 feet. The intent of the code permits a reduction down to 17 and a half feet, if in fact that could be built on. This particular lot is very typical for the surrounding area, 19 feet is not unusual for that area. Our modal setback would be applied for setback in the front yard, even though five foot is required. We would do that based upon the design review. And as I mentioned, 8.3 feet in the rear, where a 10-foot requirement would be required under Article 53, with a shallow lot exception. Our floor-to-air ratio is 2.96, 1.0 is the maximum, 3F 2000 district. We feel a 2.96 is, again, consistent with the surrounding densities of the buildings all along Chelsea Street, as well as the surrounding properties along Bremen, as well as Go, so quite consistent in size. The height of our building is at 38 and a half feet, slightly above the height limit of Article 53, which is 35 feet, three stories. We would have below 300 square foot per open space. Again, based upon the size of this lot, there isn't a lot of opportunity for open space to be located. We are proposing a roof deck for the building that would be located above the fourth level, and we can review whether or not that is something that would be available for the entire building.
So the building's on the block, I'm looking at this photo. Are they, so they look like they're three-story buildings, right?
Correct, yep. So in that photo, if you look to the first site context photo, it shows the buildings, you see the rear of the buildings on Chelsea Street, those are all four-story buildings, directly across the street as well, I believe it was a four-story building that was recently constructed.
And this is a short block, it's just those two homes?
Correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Grounds adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the developer addressed most of the concerns of the abutters and also Maverick Central Neighborhood Association voted in support of this proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Counsel, I did forget to ask you about that roof deck.
So that roof deck is accessed by headhouse, and that is because of the height of the building. Building code would require a headhouse for four stories. We did present that specifically to the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. There was no objection to the headhouse. This neighborhood is not as sensitive as some other neighborhoods when it comes to headhouses.
We are sensitive to headhouses, however. So it sounds to me that the two things that we have been pretty consistent on is the look of the headhouse. And I think the second thing is that because flood hazard area is cited, we need to respond to it in some way in our motion. So I think, at least for the flood hazard area, we will deny that relief, and then you can sort it out through whatever process needs to happen to sort it out. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review, with the exception of the-
Denying building code relief.
With, and denying any building code relief.
I'll second that motion.
So did you take into account the flood hazard area?
Well, that would be building code.
So denied the flood hazard area? Okay, and then, and design review for the headhouse? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 101, 5822, 127 Marion Street. This is a change in the occupancy from elderly housing, elderly daycare, accessory community space to elderly housing, daycare, and accessory daycare. Also, complete interior renovations. The violation is Article 27G, this is in the East Boston I-Pod. And Article 53, Section 8, the daycare is forbidden. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Tanya Hennel from the East Boston Social Center. This proposal is seeking to change the occupancy from existing senior congregate elderly housing with adult daycare, that's how it was formally used, an accessory community space to elderly housing and child daycare and accessory daycare. There'll also be a complete renovation of that ground-level floor that would house this particular project.
So please describe for me the difference between, so it's going to be elderly housing, daycare for kids, and what is accessory daycare?
Just goes along with the same.
But it's all on the same property?
All on the same property, all in the same section, on the ground level.
Okay, and how many children? And how many square feet for this use?
There'll be 41 children at the site. It'll be expanding the infant care that the East Boston Social Center is able to provide by adding an additional infant room to serve seven more kids. And then there'll be three toddler rooms, serving a total of 36 toddlers.
And that's, okay, and there's no need for adult daycare anymore?
No, it was, the CDC ran the program, and I believe it's-
Yeah, so the, the East Boston CDC owns the building and developed the elderly housing. The East Boston Neighborhood Health Center was actually running the PACE program there. They've consolidated that program to a site in Revere. So all of the seniors who were being served there now have transportation to a new center in Revere.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell? Any questions from the board?
Yeah, now that the, now that the senior daycare is being removed, are you still going to, do you have any plans to work on BTD, on maybe turning over some of that curb space that was used for pickup and drop-off ambulances and things like that?
So there's pickup and drop-off for buses, right? It was zoned, it was labeled as that. We're going to continue to use that for the pickup and drop-off of the, for the children. Just the time changes, you want to go over the peak hours?
Sure, so as opposed to having intermittent buses coming and using it for drop-off, we have two buses in the morning that bring children. We also have two buses in the afternoon who pick up the kids at the center. We have heard from the residents in the building that they would like to maintain that loading zone because they do have frequently the need for ambulances and other services to come and have a loading zone in front of the building, so it'll serve a dual purpose.
Thank you, any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The applicant addressed most of the concerns of the abutters during the community process, and also this proposal received strong support from Eagle Hill Civic Association and from many residents of Eagle Hill, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would like to go on record in strong support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council, I'm Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 101, 3470, 34 West Eagle Street. This to include an extension of living space into the basement and new rear decks. Violation is Article 25, Section 5, this is in the flood hazard district. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me, Tria Lareya from Joy Street Design. Also with me, Gary Lieberman, who's the property owner. For the record, Madam Chair, I believe flood hazard is cited erroneously. This property located on West Eagle Street would not be, I do not believe a flood hazard, would be a flood hazard, always faced upon the elevation of Eagle Hill. So we're not requesting any relief for that. If the board feels it's necessary to dispose of that, we have no objection. With respect to the proposal, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use located at 34 West Eagle Street. The property is a pre-existing three-family dwelling. Our proposal is to conduct a complete rehabilitation of the entire building.
Is this a new owner?
This is a new, yeah, new owner, correct.
This is a new owner, okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Our proposal is for a complete rehabilitation, interior reprogram of the entire building, which would include the extension of some living space into the basement area, as well as locating utilities and storage for, would ultimately be a condo conversion. The exterior of the building will be updated to be consistent with Eagle Hill standards. We provided depiction of the front elevation as well, to remove a lot of that vinyl siding and certainly improve the appearance of this building. and certainly improve the appearance of this building. By way of relief, the side, we do require side yard relief based upon the proposed addition that we're doing to square off the building. The two-and-a-half-foot side yard setback is the required setback. We would be within that setback based upon the proposed addition. The rear yard, we would, we have a fifteen-foot pre-existing rear yard, but because we are proposing an addition, any work that's done at the upper level would also require relief. The pre-existing floor-to-air ratio is one point two-three presently, with our proposed modifications to the building would increase that FAR to one point five-eight, so the difference between the one point two-three and the one point five-eight would be necessary for variance as well. There's no other relief necessary, even though there's no parking proposed, we are not changing the occupancy, so the occupancy will remain at three units, and therefore no other relief would be necessary for that. The buildings, the building will consist of three units, generous-sized units, all at three bedrooms, which is a rarity for conversions of existing stock in East Boston. Units two and three will be about twelve hundred and twenty-one square feet, and unit one with the extended living space into the basement will be about seventeen hundred square feet, so very generous-sized units for family-style living in the Eagle Hill neighborhood.
So, a couple questions. The proposed addition, what's the total square footage of the proposed additions on all floors?
Five hundred and fifty square feet.
It's only, it's five hundred and fifty square feet? And second question is, that shed, that shed-like structure, if I look at this, this, this photo, that's proposed to stay?
Right.
That side, is that just the access to the basement or the common space?
Right.
And there's no other way of working around it?
Not, I mean, that would access the storage area located in the basement from the front of the building, otherwise, I think you're limited based upon the reprogramming to have living space down there.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drums are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I do, so the plans I have right here only show unit one and unit two unless
There's a typo, I apologize.
The third floor should be unit three?
Yeah, third floor, it's identified as A three, third-floor plan. It does say unit two, but it's actually unit three, I apologize.
Any other questions from the board?
Is that like an alleyway in between the two properties, or, I'm just looking at that front photo?
So the area, the area that's open, Mr. Agiero, is on the thirty, thirty-six West Eagle side. There is, it appears to be access into their, their side of their building, so that's for their access.
Okay, and that curb cut, there's a curb cut there, but there's no driveway, right?
The curb cut, you're seeing that where?
It's on the photo, the front photo.
Yeah. No, I just, I just, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I don't, where's the curb cut?
And, and we're just assuming that that shed thing is on your property?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The developer addressed the concerns of the abattoirs during the community process and also Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? I neglected to ask you, what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven foot six, minimum.
Seven foot six, okay. May I have a motion, please?
Just one, sorry, one more question. We're going to keep that front yard setback, right?
We're not changing anything in the front of the building.
Motion to approve pending BPDA design review.
And no relief for flood hazard?
Yeah, I, I can deal with ISD, I mean, it's fine.
I mean, I'd rather just do it now and then it's just processed after that. Is there a second?
Okay, okay, so motion to approve the relief without flood hazard relief.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero zero six seven six one, one seventy-nine Putnam Street. This is interior renovations to legalize existing living space in unit one and basement. This article, violation is Article fifty-three, section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jeff Gannon. I'm at three Linwood Avenue in North Reading. I am the architect representing the applicants.
So tell us what's being proposed?
There is an existing three-unit building that has basement living space. When the applicants, Brett and Lindsay McLennan here, next to me, purchased the property, they thought that space was official, it is not, so they are just trying to go on record and make it the official living space. So essentially, the first unit will have two floors, the basement or garden level as well as the first floor.
And what's the size of that first unit? Square footage, including the basement?
Including the basement, it'll be around fifteen hundred square feet.
And the other two units?
They're about seven fifty.
Okay, and what's the use in the basement?
Residential.
No, I mean, is it a bedroom, is it a playroom, is it, what is it?
Oh, beg your pardon. It is going to be kitchen, dining, there is one bathroom and a storage area.
Kitchen and dining, okay. What floor-to-ceiling height there?
It is seven foot six in most areas. The bathroom, which is lifted slightly, is seven feet.
Seven feet, okay.
Or will be seven feet, yeah.
I think we've covered all questions. Mr. Candel, how are the plans?
Drums are fine. I just see, there's no common access to the mechanical?
The common accents, access, excuse me, will be through the rear stair and patio area. We are putting in a new wall, so all tenants will have common access that, through that route.
Okay, is that satisfactory, Mr. Candel? Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal got strong support from the abattoirs and as well from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
And this is with no code relief?
Yeah, with no, yeah, with no code relief for the mechanicals.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero one six five four three seventy, Utah Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two to a three-unit residential dwelling. The violation is Article twenty-seven T, East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, insufficient parking, off-street parking and loading requirement. Article fifty-three, section eight, use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section nine, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Well, yes, still good morning. Attorney Laureen Scatino, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. With me is the owner of the property, Maria Grimaldi. This is a proposal to change the occupancy from a two to a three-unit residential dwelling. We're planning on staying within the existing footprint of the dwelling and just seeking the occupancy within the basement of the unit. The reason behind this request is that the owner's parents currently reside in the building, and they're having a little bit of a difficult time accessing the front steps, so they're looking to move into the first-level living if this was approved. By way of variances, this is a two-F two thousand neighborhood, so we would need a variance for the use as we're going to three units. For floor area ratio, we're just slightly over the zero-point-eight mark, we're probably at about zero-point-nine, and we would need a variance for one parking spaces, we're not providing any parking, as well as iPod. And with that, I can take, and the ceiling height of the basement, because I know this is a frequently asked question, is actually eight feet two inches.
And what's the square footage in the basement?
So the total square footage of unit one would end up being nine hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Unit two is about one thousand fifty-six square feet, and unit three is nine hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and they're all currently being used as one-bedrooms.
Okay, so access, and doors, how it's going to be accessed, access to support elderly people?
So if you look at the front picture, the doorway will likely be enlarged on the street view, there's already a, an open doorway, and then there's actually also access to the rear as well.
And there's stairs?
There won't be any stairs.
No stairs whatsoever?
The worst that there would be is a small step going down, but everything is pretty level, and we plan on modifying it to fit the same.
Okay, so if I'm looking at optional new window to replace door, so I'm just looking at, okay, I'm looking at unit three proposed, unit three proposed at basement?
Yes.
Plan A two. It seems to indicate that the optional new window to replace the door.
So there's actually another doorway that could be accessed by way of the yard, so they're leaving the option open to replace that with the window, and then also keep an, add a doorway down in the back where it says "storage" in the unit three proposed at basement.
And so the mechanical area will be through that side entrance?
Correct.
And, so somebody would have to go through a storage space to access the building if they need, they need a wheelchair or something like that?
No, they can still access it by the front entrance, the storage space is towards the back.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drums are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, there were no concerns from the abattoir, and also this proposal received strong support from Eagle Hill Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council, I'm Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just one question, where is the owner's unit?
The owner's unit currently is, is the, it's the first level, right? What's currently the first level? Your parents?
My parents are on the second floor.
It's her parents.
Thirty steps right now to go down.
The owner does not currently live in the building, it's her parents that live in the building.
Oh, I see. Because, you know, we always struggle with the, with the relief going to the building and not to the owner, and the current situation, so I'll just put it out there.
Understood. We would have, you know, we would, likely this would have qualified to be on a Thursday hearing, however, due to estate planning purposes, my client currently owns the building. Her parents have lived there throughout their lives, so this has been the situation.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling, actually, it's eleven thirty-five, we're going to call eleven thirty. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven thirty? I'll call it again if anybody's outside. Calling, next case, calling BOA one zero two three zero two zero forty Morris Street. This is the confirmed occupancy as a three-family dwelling. This is an existing condition. The building has been used as a three-family dwelling for many years. Full renovations to all three units and basement, new kitchen upgrades, construct new rear decks, and the building will be fully sprinkled. The built, the violation is Article twenty-seven T, section nine, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, yeah.
Hi, good morning, my name is Claudia Sierra, I'm a resident of East Boston. I live on Ficonder Street, but I'm, it's about my property on forty Morris Street.
And tell us what you're proposing to do?
So, this has been kind of a strange process for me.
Did you just tell us?
I, I purchased this property as a three-family, and when I applied to do the full renovations to keep it as a three-family, I'm not doing any additions or anything other than rear porches.
Paying taxes as a three-family?
Yes, it's been
And you have, if you have utilities for a three-family?
Absolutely.
And tell us about the, is this a unit in the basement or an attic?
It's a basement that is the first, so the basement has, has been an existing part of the first floor, and under the renovations, we just renovated the property, it was in extremely bad shape, but the property, we were told it was a single-family, and down the road, about four months later, ISD confirmed that they had made a mistake, and they were looking at another property, so it is, it was a three-family.
So, I, I still need to understand how the building works, okay?
Okay.
So, there's three units.
Correct.
First unit is how many square feet, that includes the basement and the first floor?
It's approximately twelve hundred with the
Twelve hundred square feet, and the basement and first floor.
Correct.
How about the second unit?
The second and third floor are approximately seven forty-five each.
And where's the third unit?
Uh, it's, it's
Second and third are each seven forty-five. And tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven three.
Seven foot three, and what's the, what's it used for?
It's, the basement alone is a third bedroom, a second bathroom, laundry, and storage.
Okay, and since, um, you want to hold out a bit?
Yeah, it looks like a three-family.
Is it all above three? It's first floor and basement, but it's extensive living space for the basement.
Yes, it's extensive.
Yeah, so the first was the unit itself, and then, yeah.
Um, Mr. Candel, how are the plans?
Drums are fine.
Are drawings are fine?
Yes.
And everything for the basement, basement living is good?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. There were no concerns from the abattoirs during the community process, and this proposal received strong support from the abattoirs and as well from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at Large in East Society George's office, and she would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with no code, no building code relief.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Your, it's been approved, no building code relief, okay? Good luck.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one zero one six five three eight, forty-one to forty-three Horace Street. There is companion case, BOA one oh one six five three seven, forty-five to forty-seven Horace Street. This is for forty-one forty-three, to add a roof deck to the headhouse, and add six hundred square feet with a bed and bath and basement. Violation Article fifty-three, section nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty-three, section nine, excessive height. This is the same purpose for forty-five forty-seven, and also the same violation, so I will not read into the record. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me, owner of the property, Joseph Chakilo.
Yeah, I'm used to him out, Romeo.
I have him.
Oh, cool.
Today, maybe I could have brought the slideshows, I swear.
Very official.
New accommodations.
Baby steps, please.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, a little time.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with me is Joseph Chakilo, who is the owner of the property. Yeah, so with me is Joseph Tequila, who is the owner of the property. Madam Chair, this involves two existing permitted, uh, two families dwellings located in the Harborview neighborhood section of East Boston. Uh, these properties were approved by this board some time back and have since gone under construction. Uh, with respect to the request today, we are amending...
So this had gone through when?
Uh, maybe earlier than that, because the permit was, might've been twenty sixteen, prior, prior petitioner. Mr. Tequila purchased this project from the owner, uh, and proceeded with construction immediately upon closing. Um, what we have before the board is a request to amend the original approval and original permit, uh, where we are proposing to add a roof deck access by headhouse as well as extend the living space into the basement.
It's already constructed.
I want to explain, if I may? I, I've, I've prepped for this question because I knew it was coming.
Okay, well, let's talk about the easy part, I suppose.
Extend the living space to the basement, yeah. So the proposal is to add about six hundred, seven hundred square feet of additional living space into the basement that would be pertinent to the first level, uh, that would allow both of these units to be duplex-style units and provide for, uh, appropriate marketable-sized living space for each of these buildings. So they'll remain two-family dwellings, but we will have an equal amount of space at the lower level as well as the upper levels. Um, the programming for the building by way of open spaces, that the plan would be to have the, uh, rear yards combined. They will be open space for the lower-level units and the roof decks would be exclusive to the upper-level units. Uh, with respect to the existing headhouses as well as the roof decks, uh, Mr. Tequila has done a number of projects in the Harborview neighborhood, uh, many of them by right, not requesting zoning relief and building a number of two-family dwellings. Uh, when you permit a two-family dwelling, um...
So let me just backtrack.
Sure.
When this initially came through, did it come through for a headhouse, oh, for a roof deck or not?
It did not.
So it came through as straight with any provisos that were put on, with no roof decks or anything like that?
There were not. It was strictly design review only.
So it was just straight two families?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that was done by a prior petitioner. We, Mr. Tequila, my office got involved in that. Um, Mr. Tequila's built a number of two families by right in this particular neighborhood, and when permitting by right in the neighborhood, you would be allowed, under new construction, under the, under Article fifty-three, to not include your roof, your headhouse as part of your building height. So there is a conceivable way when you build ground up to build a roof deck access by headhouse and not require zoning relief for that. The nuance under Article fifty-three when it comes to rooftop restrictions involves adding a headhouse or adding a roof deck to an existing building and therefore you require conditional use. And provided that your headhouse is not more than ten percent of the total footprint of the roof, you can do that under Article six with permission of the board. So there is somewhat of an ambiguity in Article fifty-three that when you are building ground up with a headhouse, it doesn't count towards height. You can do it without conditional use, and that's been done...
Have you informed your clients that we have, uh, a need, I'm sure you have, because you're before us plenty of times, that we prefer hatches to roof decks, I mean to headhouses? Have you explored that option?
I, I can, I can explain. So that, without saying what I've told my client, he is well aware of the preference for new construction, that a headhouse is preferred over roof deck. In fact, he's been, I'm sorry, a hatch is preferred over a headhouse. He's been before this board on other projects where he has, uh, proposed, when he's the petitioner, he has proposed the project with hatch, not headhouse. In this particular case, the, uh, mistake, if you will, had come from when constructing the building, almost identical to buildings that he's done, uh, including buildings on Horace Street, he's done those by right with headhouse. The nuance here is that this was approved by the board, uh, as a building with no, uh, no headhouse, and when the permit issued, it was not something that was included in the original plans. He did file for an amendment with the plans, understanding that he would need relief to extend the living space into the basement and that would have to come before the board. Then the violation was issued relative to the headhouse, which at this point he then petitioned for relief for that as well. That was already constructed as part of the framing, and that was something that he understands isn't the normal way to proceed, but has done in the past, uh, as a matter of right, uh, for other projects in the community.
How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
We did present this back to the Harborview Neighborhood Association and...
Well, I, I get it. I mean...
We wanted to make sure we were transparent about it.
Somebody just went ahead with a certain assumption and then it's a mea culpa, basically.
A reasonable one, I would add, Madam Chair, not an unreasonable.
No valid judgment, for the matter. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the developer addressed most of the concerns of the abutters and also Harborview Neighborhood Association, board in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Pizzani, do you want to, uh, put in a couple of words back there? I just noticed you there for a minute, sitting in the back.
I just caught me nervous.
I think Mr. Linz just breathed a sigh of relief here.
I thought he was coming to speak just on this.
Um, is, was there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed because I, I don't, don't think this is a good precedence to start, uh, approving very large he, headhouses like this.
I can assure you, it won't happen again, certainly with this developer.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero zero four zero six eight, forty-eight Union Park. This is to construct a rear deck off the kitchen in unit three. Some interior changes. The violation is Article sixty-four, section nine point four. Townhouse, rowhouse extensions, a new deck off, off floor three projects into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Norberto Leon and I'm the architect for the project.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, we are proposing to build a, uh, small deck on the third level of the project, uh, and that requires, uh, ZBA approval for anything above the first floor.
And what's the dimension?
The dimension is, um, fifteen feet by six feet.
Fifteen by six, and is it going to be bracket-supported?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, uh, Mr. Candel? Any questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of, uh, this proposal. It matches, uh, very similar decks in the south end, and there were no immediate concerns from the abutters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. We have heard no concerns from the Union Park Neighborhood Association or the abutters, therefore we support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Have a good day, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine eight eight nine five seven, one thirty-five Myrtle Street. This is to install a new rooftop deck, uh, excess from the existing headhouse. Violation is Article twenty, section one, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Palumbo, one thirty-five Myrtle Street, and I'm with, uh, my architect, Scott Trineer from Chu and Company.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Um, we are upgrading the existing headhouse to, uh, to make some repairs and proposing to add a, a new roof deck.
Okay, um, tell us about the, are you changing the dimension of the headhouse at all?
No.
Okay, and the dimension of that roof deck?
Uh, the roof deck is, uh, two hundred and forty-five square feet roughly. Uh, it's a, an awkward size, it's not a square size. Uh, the main portion of the roof deck, though, is, uh, roughly twelve foot eight by, uh, eight foot eleven on the front and, um, approximately the same size, totally rear by the headhouse.
Okay, and the headhouse has been there how long?
Us, since the construction of the building, as far as I know.
And when was that?
Actually, I don't, I don't know when the house was held, yes.
Um, and this is a, how many units in the building?
It is a, a multi-family. It's, um, two units.
Okay, and this would be access to all units or just the top unit?
No, it's just only to the top unit.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in support of this?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague Shanice Piamantel, we would like to go on, uh, on record in support. She held in a Butters meeting, uh, back in September. This is a modest proposal. Headhouse is existing. We see no issues at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero zero four three seven two, two twenty-five West Third Street. This is to construct a fourth-floor addition with roof deck on an existing single-family home. The violation is Article twenty-seven S dash five, section five. This is in the South Boston iPod, Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine. Roof structure restrictions, Article sixty-eight, section eight. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article sixty-eight, section eight. The building height is excessive in feet, Article sixty-eight, section eight, the front yard is insufficient, Article sixty-eight, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Eric Zacherson, uh, architect for the project, one Ludlow Street in Charlestown, and with me is, uh, Chad Tyler, one of the new owners of the property.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, it's an existing, uh, currently three-story building with garage on the first floor, uh, living on the, the second floor and two bedrooms on the third floor, and they, uh, it was built in two thousand and twelve. They are proposing to add a third floor with a master suite and, uh, to, to, to remove the existing roof deck and headhouse and, uh, and put a roof deck and headhouse on top of the fourth floor.
And when this, uh, project was before this board in two thousand and twelve, were there any restrictions placed on it?
Not, no, not to our knowledge, no.
Did you look at the old files, yeah? Okay. Um, and this is going to be accessed by a headhouse. You've heard what we, what our concern is with headhouses.
Yes, we are, we have. Uh, there is currently a headhouse, which is pretty hard to see from the neighbors, and four of the neighboring buildings have, uh, on this block have headhouses. So we have reduced it as much as we can, pushed it to the back of the property and sloped it away from the street.
And what's the dimension of that deck?
The deck is twelve foot by fifteen foot.
Okay. And so your violation is...
Well, sorry, twelve foot by twenty-three feet.
Excessive FAR. So level four flow, four plan proposes a master plus office, basically.
Yes.
And then a roof deck. And then what happens on the third floor? Two bedrooms, did you say?
Yes, there are two bedrooms.
Okay.
What building, what, what is the height of the building?
It, it is, uh, currently, uh, it is thirty-two feet six. The new roof line would be at forty-three feet and the headhouse would be at fifty-one, the top of the headhouse would be at fifty-one feet.
And that's conformity with the two buildings next to it?
That is, yes, that is the intent, yes.
And, um, how are the plans, Mr. Candel? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held in the Butters meeting October twenty-second, um, in which no Butters showed any concerns. Thank you.
Is anybody here to, oh, go ahead.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. As the meeting went well and we also spoken with the residents and the, lo, St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association, they have expressed no, no concerns, therefore we support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve for the continued BPDA review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case for ten thirty, calling BOA one zero two four six seven seven, three sixteen to three eighteen Northern Avenue. This is new construction of a four-story steel-framed core and shell building for research and development use. Includes up to forty-five below-grade parking spaces. Includes ten thousand square feet of retail, restaurant and service space. The violation is Article six, section zero three A, additional conditions in a restricted parking district, and Article eight, section seven, accessory parking garage is conditional, item number seventy-two. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney Jared Agarman. Ruben Junius and Rose. With me is Steve Faber of Related Beal, the developer. This is the second building of a two-phase, uh, life sciences project started in, uh, two thousand and thirteen, so it's been through large project review. Notice of project change went through the BPDA over the summer. Uh, the relief we need is to do, uh, structured parking. So at present, the, um, the phase one is complete, has certificate of occupancy. That's, uh, that's got, uh, eighty-four surface spaces, but this will have forty-five structured spaces and therefore it needs a conditional use because it's in the restricted parking overlay.
How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to, uh, Bob, did you want us to say anything? It's a restriction, it's a restricted parking district, um, forty-five, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my operator is representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live and work for the city of Boston, want to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for approval, uh, for the BPDA?
Is there a second?
It's gonna go through a design review.
Design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the eleven thirties again. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for eleven thirty? Hearing none, I'll call the first case. Calling BOA nine seven two nine six three fifty-eight Lubec Street. Lubec Street here?
Yeah.
This is to renovate, change the occupancy from four to nine-unit dwelling, erect in addition with roof deck and re, reconstruct rear deck. The violation is Article twenty-five, section five. This is in the flood hazard district. Article fifty-three, section nine, the lot area for additional units is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the height requirement is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article twenty-seven T dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient, and Article fifty-three, section nine, the required side, uh, front yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, uh, with me is James Christopher, architect for the project, along with Nick DeLibero, uh, who is the owner of the property at fifty-eight Lubec Street. Uh, Madam Chair, this is located in the Jeffries Point Go Street, uh, neighborhood. It's a pre-existing four-unit dwelling, uh, relatively larger-sized units. Our proposal is to change the occupancy from the four units to nine units, and we're proposing a vertical addition as well. Uh, this would be a mix of one studio, three one-bedrooms and five two-bedroom units. Uh, these would actually be smaller in size than what the existing conditions presently have. Uh, we will also propose the, uh, rehabilitation of exterior façades. Uh, this will involve an upgrade to the life safety, uh, for sprinklers and fire alarm. Uh, this is currently a rental property and, uh, intended ultimately, uh, for condo conversion.
So this, the subject property is this one right here?
That's correct.
Okay.
What you're looking at, um, just for context purposes, to the left of that, um, if you're looking at the property, Madam Chair, is the, uh, Mont Carmel rectory, which is part of the Mont Carmel project, which I believe has been, uh, recently brought before this board. Uh, that is the building that is being demolished and, uh, there'll be created open space at that location. Uh, height of the Mont Carmel, uh, various locations, I believe, is up to five stories as well. Uh, this is located in the MFR district, so the proposed change from a four to a nine unit is allowed under Article fifty-three as a multi-family residential unit.
And this is also cited as flood hazard?
So that's interesting. I, I typically include the, um, abstract from the BPDA, not that that's, uh, you know, gospel, uh, but we noticed that the flood hazard zone is not quite, uh, as far as Lubec Street. Uh, usually when it's a close call, we actually do a further analysis, so this too, uh, we would reserve our right to, uh, look at this through an elevation certificate. We're not looking for relief. There is a pre-existing condition of the building already. We're not proposing new construction, so I'm not necessarily sure there would be any additional, uh, conservation commission review, uh, because this is already an existing building with existing conditions. Uh, but we will address that accordingly with ISD, and we don't, we don't feel that that is, uh, something at the end of the day that's going to be an issue.
Okay, so your, um, studios are three hundred and thirty-two square feet?
That's correct.
And your two beds are five eighty-two?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, so this is going from four to nine units and you're adding a floor, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So with respect to the height, Madam Chair, and you can see in the, um, proposed, or existing conditions plans, uh, there is a, uh, headhouse, uh, that is already above the upper level, uh, pretty substantial in size. Our height of our building will be consistent with the existing house, so we're not going any higher, uh, than the headhouse that is, um, that presently exists.
So you're basically pulling that, uh, additional, uh, addition, you're, you're pulling it back with a front yard deck essentially, a front facing deck?
That's correct. Um, that will give a little bit of a setback and preserve the massing of the building along Lubec Street, so we wouldn't be changing the, uh, front facade of the building. The addition would be setback. I believe it's about, it's about fourteen feet, James? About fourteen feet back from the, uh, front parrot bed.
And the basement, there's no dwellings on the... And the basement, there's no dwellings in the basement?
None, haven't been.
Pardon?
None, haven't been.
Okay.
Storage only.
How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. The applicant addressed most of the concerns of the abatters during the community process, and also this proposal had the support from Gov. Street Citizen Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council. Lydia Edwards. The Councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? So this, um, the, this doesn't require you to provide a handicapped unit at all, does it?
No, because it's an existing building, and we're only increasing the occupancy by four units. I don't think it does.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review?
And, um, no relief-
No building, no relief, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine seven two nine six five forty-eight Geneva Street. This is to erect a six-unit residential dwelling with parking for three vehicles. Violation's Article twenty-five, Section five. This is in flood hazard district. Article twenty-seven T dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking load and proposed off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Richard Linz, two forty-five Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, same petitioner as the last, Nick DeLibero, with me as well, owner of the property. With me also is James Christopher for the project. This proposal involves the construction of a ground-up new six-unit dwelling with, we were showing four parking spaces. Mix of four one-bedroom and two-
I'm sorry, is it three or four parking?
I probably have four parking spaces. We're showing four. Three, okay, I apologize. Three, as, as indicated by the second here. A mix of four one-bedroom and two two-bedroom units, and this is intended upon completion for homeownership. This also is located in the multifamily residential district, so this use would be permitted under Article fifty-three. Also located in the Gov. Street, lower Jeffries Point neighborhood. Geneva Street, I guess for lack of a better term, is probably the newest emerging neighborhood in East Boston. This is bordering right on the airport Service Road and is adjacent to the Embassy Suites Hotel, located just on the edge of the airport property. This proposal would be consistent in density and size of surrounding buildings. We've indicated in the site contact photos some of the adjoining properties to the rear that are located on Cottage Street. Mr. DeLibero actually is the owner of properties on Cottage Street as well, and these buildings are, the proposed building is consistent in size. The unit breakdown is roughly, ranges roughly from about five hundred and twenty-two square feet up to about twelve hundred and ninety square feet. And providing a diverse mix of the unit counts is something that we constantly hear in the neighborhood as being more preferable. The larger units obviously being available for family-style living. By way of relief, as I said, the multifamily use is permitted. The lot size would be sufficient, as two thousand square feet is the minimum. We do have sufficient lot width at thirty, at thirty-one feet. We are proposing a modal setback consistent with the alignment along that portion of Geneva Street. We do require relief for the side yard, although the requirement is two-point-five. One of our side yards are set at one, one foot, the other is at three-point-five feet. Our rear yard is set at fourteen feet. We do qualify for the shallow lot exception based upon the depth of this lot, so the required setback would only be twenty feet. Our floor-to-air ratio is proposed at two-point-six-eight. We are permitted to have one-point-oh, and our height of our building is at fifty feet, five stories. Three-story, thirty-five feet would be the maximum in the FAR district, so we're requesting a variance for that. There'd be a total of three spaces provided. Nine would be required for six units, and this is also located within the iPod.
Madam Chief, just one correction. There is, there is four parking spaces. There's three service spaces at the rear, and there's one interior space located parallel to the mechanical room, interior and garage.
So tell us how the parking would work?
So you would drive-
Because I'm looking at A1.
Correct, yep.
All right, so tell us how that would work.
So you would drive interior to the building, to the rear, and the rear portion of the garage would be open. So you pull up to those, there's three parking spaces abutting of rear property line. And then if you look adjacent to the mechanical and trash rooms towards the front of the garage, there'd be an additional space there that'd be accessed by a three-point turn within the garage.
And, um, and this is a, okay, so you're providing a lift in the building?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Candel?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. The developer addressed the concerns of the abatters, and also we got, um, strong support from Gov. Street Citizen Association. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council. Lydia Edwards. The Councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review?
And, and if we can focus, I think you've heard us talk about this before, the more porous garage doors rather than the solid piece that feels that it's a barrier. And since you have the parking that seems to come, we might wanna look just in the past, as in the past, Jeff, with screening and buffering at the rear property lines, when we've had this kind of parking situation before. Okay? And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine six one four six seven forty-seven to fifty-one Webster Street. This is a restaurant, outdoor seating for twenty-two with food and alcohol service. Violation's Article nine, Section one, extension of a restaurant use with a resident, in a residential sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Richard Linz, two forty-five Summer Street. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Phil Frateroli, who is the owner and operator of Canard Tavern, located off the corner of Orleans and Webster Street in East Boston. Madam Chair, back about four years ago, this board approved the redevelopment of the site, located where, currently where, where Canard Tavern is located, into a mixed-use building that includes ground-level restaurant, yoga studio, residential units, and rooftop dining. That was something that was very well-received by the neighborhood at the time, considering that this area of the neighborhood was virtually undeveloped. It's proven to be a tremendous asset for the surrounding area. The neighborhood has supported this restaurant, as well as the proposed project that's before the board, as evidenced by the significant number of letters of support from surrounding neighbors. Our proposal at this time is to allow for seasonal outdoor seating and dining. We are proposing a total of twenty-two seats to be located on the Orleans Street side of the building. This would obviously be done in conjunction with the requirements set forth by the Public Improvement Commission. We've already appeared before PIC, who has approved this project, subject to the zoning board's approval for, for, for the use that we're requesting. As the board may be familiar, but I'll make sure that I reiterate, seasonal dining is only available between the months of April and October. There is no seasonal dining during the months between October and, and April.
So tell me, once the space is, proposed space is in, what's the, what's the, the width of that sidewalk?
In the plan, is it four and a half? Yeah, four-point-five feet.
And is that accessible by somebody in a wheelchair or a baby carriage or something?
It, it is, and that is certainly the criteria the Public Improvement Commission looks at in determining whether or not this can be approved for outdoor cafe.
See, and this is for twenty-two spaces?
Correct.
On Orleans?
Correct. As you can see, Madam Chair, most of the seating is actually located within the boundary of the property. There is some carve-outs and bump-outs that were designed into the building for plans to add this feature and amenity to the restaurant in the future. This is not something that was requested early on in the approval process, simply because it was an opportunity for Phil to prove that his, um, his business could be a compatible business with the neighborhood, and we feel that, again, based upon the support that we've received for the project at the time, as well as the project that's before the board, this is something that could be a complement to this use, and certainly to allow for seasonal, seasonal dining.
And, um, do the, um, do the barriers get removed in the wintertime?
They do.
They do?
So I believe it's, I think it's April fifteenth to October fifteenth, and after October fifteenth, that is all removed. The seating is removed as well, and placed in storage.
So there's enough, uh, enough space for somebody to walk, the entire, the entire sidewalk-
That's correct.
That becomes available?
That is correct.
How are the plans, um, Mr. Candel?
Drawing's adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Are these gonna have tables outside too, where these chairs are?
That's correct. And all of the service that occurs, has to occur within the designated area, including the service of alcoholic beverages. Licensing Commission will also weigh in on how that proceeds, and certainly there's rules and requirements that go along with that as well.
And will the flower boxes be on the inside property or the outside property? Because sometimes that, you know, walking in on Ubury Street or other places, you know, you, you really feel the, the difference or, um, yeah, you really feel the difference, even in the South End. Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held two abatters meetings for this proposal, where the applicant worked closely with the abatters and addressed most of their concerns. Also, this proposal got the support, strong support from Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association and members of the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council. Lydia Edwards. The Councilor would also like to go on, on record in support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, Madam Members of the Board. Jessica Rodriguez, City Council at Large in East Society George's office, and she would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chief, Members of the Board. Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Council would like to support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday in New Year.
You too. See you in the new year.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine seven zero four zero four four sixteen Beacon Street. This is an interior and exterior renovations of a four-story brick rowhouse. The proposed work includes repairs to exterior masonry, window replacement, energy-efficient upgrades, renovation to kitchen and bathrooms, and reconfiguration of bedrooms and accessibility upgrades. Current use is an R-two fraternity. The violation's Article thirty-two, Section nine. This is in the G card. Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Shields. I'm a retired engineer, representing the owners of four sixteen Beacon Street, a not-for-profit corporation managed by MIT alumni and supervise the students who live there.
So just, uh, hold on. Just tell us what is being proposed. How many, um, just tell us what's being proposed. What's, what's currently in the building? How many bedrooms are, however this is laid out, and what, and what the proposed expansion is?
You wanna get groundwater out of the way?
Pardon?
You wanna get groundwater out of the way?
Oh, yes. Um, Christian?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Kristen Smalley, Boston Rowan Trust, and we do have the BWSC approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
Thank you. Are we still holding you up, Christian? Okay, good. You too. See you in the new year. Okay, so let's go ahead with the proposal.
Okay. My name's Edric Van Buiscom. I'm the architect for the project. My company's EVB Design in Somerville. The, the project is a existing fraternity that has been there since the early fifties. It houses approximately thirty-nine students. We are doing major renovations, and as part of this, we need to provide accessibility for disabled persons. And, um, the portion of the proposal that's before you today is to construct a roof deck on top of a one-story garage in the back of the building, which faces Back Street and the river. And this is to provide a access, access alternative to an existing roof deck, which is on top of the house. And this has previously been approved through a very rigorous process with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board.
Okay, so, um, so, and the, you, you will still, you have, so the, the building is, um, so that's thirty-nine units, has always been thirty-nine units? I mean, I'm sorry, thirty-nine students, thirty-nine beds?
No increase in capacity. It's actually fewer than, it's actually fewer capacities than it had.
No increase in capacity? So what did it used to be? What did it used to be? Used to be, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, the current occupancy is sixty for the unit, an alimony unit of four sixteen.
Okay, so you're reducing it from sixty to thirty-nine beds?
Right.
Yep, and, um, tell us about that, and so the social room, et cetera, will remain the same?
No. What we're doing, this was motivated by the fact that our back wall is cracked and we had to do work on it. In the process of that, we're making a major renovation of the building to make ourselves more, more compatible from a neighbor point of view and to apply with ADA compliance. As a consequence, we're moving social rooms down and back and adding insulation. So we're spending a million and a half dollars for activities that will make the, you know, mitigate noise in the house. And we're also spending another million and a quarter for ADA compliance. And the primary reason for requesting the roof deck on the garage is to balance the competing interests of varying Boston departments between accessibility and other activities. Historical preservation. And so we're maintaining the historical character of the building. We're, uh, providing ADA compliance, and that's really, this garage roof deck is the only feasible way in order to do that.
And tell us why?
Because the other alternatives that we looked at, we're running an elevator all the way to the roof, and that would add half a million dollars of costs and reduce, and reduce our capacity from thirty-nine to thirty-two because of the interior impacts of going through the third and fourth floor with an elevator. That would threaten the financial viability of our organization because it would increase the house bills for our undergraduate students by about twenty percent.
So, um-
And, so, so, and further, it would require, further require a headhouse on the roof, which the BACC has said they wouldn't approve. The only, only third alternative that we considered was suggested by the NABB, which is an exterior elevator, which is completely infeasible because the place to put that would in, would limit our ability to actually get into the house from an ADA compliant point of view. And, you know, and we've also been told by the BACC that they wouldn't approve that.
So tell us about, um, the roof deck. Tell us about the roof deck. Is it accessible all the time? Are there limits to the use of it?
There are, there are limits. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's just-
Yeah. The, the, the deck, you know, both MIT and our organization have established a set of, set of rules for the use of the roof deck, for both, both the existing roof deck and the new roof deck. And it, you can't have parties on it. You can't have more than four people together after dark on, on the deck. You can't have any noise, any, any music in sleeping hours. There's a whole set of rules-
So what is sleeping hours?
Eleven to seven.
Okay.
A slight clarification on that, if I may, Madam Chairperson. There is no audiovisual equipment allowed on the deck, period, regardless of time.
Okay.
And we've had these procedures for the, for our current roof deck in place since two thousand and twelve. They were developed in collaboration with our neighbors, and since two thousand and twelve, we've had no complaints on, from noise associated with them. And so we think this, we think these rules are such that they will mitigate noise. There is, uh, you know, we're, this roof deck faces Storo Drive and Back Bay, so that it's already got fifty to seventy dB of ambient noise, which is well above the noise limits for the city. So we don't expect there to be any significant noise associated with it.
So tell us how these rules are enforced.
Uh, they're basically enforced by the Alumni House Corporation through a combination of fines and loss-of-use privileges. And so if they, you know, if, you know, first, first, first they're enforced by the undergraduate chapter. They've got a self-governing capability. And if, you know, if people violate the rules, they're fine. If we get indication from an alumni oversight point of view that there's a continuing activity, a continuing problem here, we can then go in and preclude their use for it, and a couple of summers ago, we actually did that.
So that states- So that states midnight, and there's an issue up there. How does that get monitored or enforced? The rules get enforced?
Absolutely. So within that regard, what happens is the Alumni House Corporation and the undergraduates provide their contact information to all of our neighbors on the outside. Those neighbors in contact us, and that is the infraction that happens for any of these rules. And then the enforcement follows, whether it's fine, restriction of uses.
Or do the MIT cops come over, or is there any role in that?
So MIT police, I believe MIT may speak about that later, but yes, MIT police, if the neighbors also have their contact information usually, so they can also reach out to the MIT police with any issues that they have.
And MIT also monitors social activities, so if there is a party at the house, they have to have that approved by MIT before it happens, and they send a representative to check on the status of things in the course of such activities.
Okay. How are the plans, Candel? Any questions from the board?
Is, it looks like in the picture here, is it piped, is it going to be piped for gas and cooking?
Yes.
Is that the intention?
Yeah. Yeah, one aspect of this is currently, and you'll see in one of the photos in the set here, there's two side-by-side photos of the front of the building. Currently, the students keep a grill out in front of the house and a picnic table, which is a real eyesore.
On the sidewalk?
On the lawn in front of the house, along Beacon Street. So it's an eyesore, it's an annoyance to the neighbors. So part of what we're also doing is moving that activity away from the front of the house, providing a place on the deck where they can have that. It would be a hard-piped gas system, which is a legal way to have a gas grill on a roof deck. So we're trying to take activities away from the streetfront, as well as what we spoke of earlier, putting the social spaces for the house down into the basement with better soundproofing.
Any other questions from the board? So I'd like to have four people besides the representatives of the Mayor's Office speak in, speak. So all those in support, I need four people to speak in support and plus representatives of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
Just before we start, I just want to make sure that we have five letters of opposition, and we also have twelve letters of support.
Okay. So let's hear from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record once more in support of this proposal. My colleague Shanice Pimentel did hold a community process around this. They have met with their neighbors, including direct abutters, and also the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, which I'm sure will also speak on their own behalf. At this time, we would like to go on record in support based on the design, making it more ADA compliant for the full building. Also, they are moving outdoor activities as stated to the rear, and the roof deck is facing Storo Drive. We also want to commend them on working with their direct abutters regarding some of the restrictions that they mentioned about what's allowable activity there and how they will go about making sure that they're, the users of the roof deck are going to be respectful to the neighborhoods surrounding them. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Mendez. I'm the Director of Architectural Access for the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities for the City of Boston. I'm going to read a brief letter.
No, please just summarize it for us. We can put the letter in the record.
Okay.
But just summarize, just like, just summarize it.
Yes. The Commission for Persons with Disabilities has met with the proponent and has reviewed the project and is delighted that this proponent is spending significantly amount of money and resources in adding an elevator and increasing accessibility in this building and therefore creating a ripple effect for the community for persons with disabilities. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to answer.
And we'd like that letter for the record, please.
We have it.
We have it? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Janet Bobbitt, and my husband and I have lived at four fourteen Beacon Street as direct abutters of the fraternity for the last thirty-four and a half years. We have found the brothers to be very amenable to resolving any issues. And in fact, for the last five to eight years, we have been meeting with the leadership brothers twice a year at the election of new officers and at the beginning of summer term. As a result of those meetings, we have revised the rules and regulations as far as noise, as far as, and we obtained their contact information so that we can contact them if there is an issue. And we have resolved the handful of problems that have occurred with regard to noise. Think it's also important that the use of the roof decks are limited to four people and are, would be less noise than in the front of the building at the present time. Also, the renovations that are being proposed for the basement, and that is where the direct sound generates to the abutters. There's increased insulation as well as dropping of the floor, so we see that as a huge benefit. In sum, and not to be repetitive, the renovations will be a boon to the four fourteen and the other neighbors who have not found an issue with the roof deck. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Dr. Howard Purcell. I'm the President and CEO of New England College of Optometry. I'm here to, in support. We are abutters to the west, one hundred twenty-five-year-old institution in the Back Bay. I can tell you from the very beginning of this project, we have been communicated with, there has been engagement with every level. I've been incredibly impressed in the time that we've been here, and in addition to this particular project, at how the group has handled things. We feel very comfortable with this. Processes are in place. We have never had any issues to this point and do not expect to have any in the future. We'd like to support this initiative. Thank you.
Two additional neighborhood residents, please. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
To our representatives of NAB or community groups.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I'm Brad Badgley. I'm the dean who oversees fraternity and sorority life at MIT. In my role, I provide oversight and support of the forty percent of our undergraduate students who are affiliated with a fraternity, sorority, or independent living group. We provide leadership development, risk management, and responsible social host training, and provide shared oversight in the houses, and also train, hire, and supervise the graduate resident advisors, we call them GRAs, that reside in each FSLG, including this property. The fraternity, sorority, independent living groups at MIT are part of what we call a shared governance framework that includes the institute, the student-led, and a fraternity council judicial committee, and the fraternity, sorority, independent living group alumni governing board. If community-related issues arise within our system...
Excuse me. Thank you.
Yes. We support. Thank you.
Of course. Last speaker, please, in support.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name's Douglas Reeves. I live at one hundred Beacon Street. I'm a neighbor. Just two quick items.
What's your address again?
Ma'am?
What's your address again?
One hundred Beacon Street.
One hundred, okay.
Just two quick items. Number one, as a neighbor, I appreciate containing the, retaining the structural integrity and the architectural integrity of the property while still making essential renovations to keep it in good shape. And secondly, as a person with a significant disability, I particularly appreciate that they are able to have ADA compliance along with the renovations and architectural integrity necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Lafer from Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. You know, normally when I come here, I speak in non-opposition to projects because we try very hard to reach agreements with people. Sometimes there are issues of principle that we think that we can't reach an agreement on, and this is one of those times. We're not speaking in opposition to the brothers at the fraternity. I think that they've generally been very, very good neighbors from all that I've heard, and they're good people. But I'd like to point out a couple of things. One, there are a tremendous number of, this is all about a deck. It's not about the interior renovations, it's not about the ADA work that they're doing inside. It's to make an ADA compliant deck, which sounds very nice, but there are thousands of us who live in the Back Bay who don't have decks, and that hasn't been a tremendous detriment to our ability to live there. I've lived there forty-five years, and I haven't been on a deck yet in my building. Their property has been a fraternity for a very, very long time, and when it started there, the Back Bay was a very different kind of place. And higher education uses became forbidden uses after they got there, and so this is an expansion of something that wouldn't be allowed to begin with now, and we think that that expansion would be a bad thing. We note that as far as we know, none of the other fraternities in the Back Bay at least have roof decks, so that doesn't seem to be a detriment. So we're asking you to not allow the expansion of this deck that wouldn't have been allowed in any other way. I would note that, interestingly, the notice for this meeting and the description in the notice that I printed out online doesn't even mention the deck, which I thought was kind of an unusual way to describe a project where all that they're talking about is the deck. But we are very opposed to the addition of this deck. Thank you.
Extension of nonconforming use.
Morning, Madam Chairman. My name is Susan Prindle. I'm co-chair of the Architecture Committee of the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. We met with the proponents in September, and we've met with them a couple of times since, trying to work something out about this deck, but at this point, we are supportive of their general renovation, but not of the deck as such.
What were the issues, what were the issues that you were trying to...
There are really two reasons for this. One is, I think despite everybody's good intentions, there will be an adverse impact to the abutters. And second is the precedent issue which Mr. Lafer touched upon. While it's, you can have a party on an upper deck and the noise will dissipate, if you have it down on the first floor right outside people's bedroom windows, they are going to hear it. And no matter how much the background noise is there, that's white noise that you don't really hear, but you do hear parties. And I'm a little confused about the occupancy limit, about the talk of only allowing four people, but you're having a grill there, which would imply that you would have larger functions. So I'm not quite sure how that all works, but the thing that sticks with us is the issue of more noise, of having the disruption that's happened on the front moved to the back, and I don't think that's much better because it's really closer to people's bedrooms than it is now. The second issue which Mr. Lafer touched on is the precedent. There are probably fifty grandfathered educational buildings in the Back Bay, the School of Optometry is one of them, who are watching with interest to see if the board will allow expansion of a nonconforming use. Without the deck, there would be no expansion issue, and I think that really, it's what the camel's nose under the tent, it's something that will go, come back to bite us later. We had a long discussion with Fisher College a year or two ago, which was about the same issue, and we denied it, and we were supported by the city at the time. The other thing is that I do think there are probably, there are other options if they are, if the fraternity is forced to look at them, that they can go back and perhaps get a variance so that they don't have to have two decks. They could, at the end of the day, eliminate both decks if necessary.
So I know Fisher does not have an IMP.
Right.
Does MIT have an IMP?
Does which?
Does MIT, I guess, no, this is...
No, this is a fraternity, so it wouldn't have an IMP.
An organization.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for the chance to talk.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Good morning. Jason Post. I live next door at four fourteen Beacon Street. I am probably the most impacted, while the fraternity members are all pretty nice. Every Friday and Saturday night, I can hear all of the music in my bedroom, in our living room. I'd say once every month and a half, either me or my wife have to text them, asking them to turn down the music. The fraternity is good about turning the music down, but it's just a hassle to ask them to turn it down every single, every single time we're trying to go to bed or...
Is this past the eleven o'clock proposal?
Oh, yeah, the parties don't start until ten or eleven. And my problem is, is that where this roof deck is, is right next to my living room. My son's bedroom is right down below that, and I don't want to have to hear noise during the day and then have to hear the music from eleven PM till one AM every day. And I just brought some pictures of, this is the beginning of the school year, seen outside of the fraternity. You know, even though I don't think hot tubs are allowed in the front yard, they still, you know, just because there's rules. I have no problem if they had a roof deck that only had four people on it, but that's the first I've ever heard of it, and I can't imagine there would only be four people on there at any time. It's just, it's...
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? The last voice.
Excuse me. My name is Steve Palmer. I live at four oh four Beacon Street, and we've lived there about forty-five or six years, and have had a long association with the Back Bay and with the city. And I'm going to follow the lead of the Neighborhood Association in thinking that the pressures that are on the city currently from within and without are so great that the scrambling for space will go on, and it will fill these cracks if it's allowed to do it. And I think that we really need to be respectful of what has been laid down in the past for good reason, and we have a limited space of four hundred and twenty-five acres, and we have to be very careful of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to respond to?
Yes, just a couple of comments.
And nothing personal, please just keep it on the issue.
Yes. Relative to the, the rules relative to the use of this roof deck, we'll preclude parties after dark. We'll limit people after dark to four people. There may be with the grilling during, after, Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon, a grilling activity on the middle, in the middle of the day.
So is there, is the gas turned off at a magical hour so that there is no late evening barbecuing out there?
I'm not, we haven't included that in the design, but we would be certainly willing to entertain that sort of a strategy.
Well, it does say it stops at nine o'clock.
Right.
The gas is turned off at nine on the barbecue?
Yes. And the comments from our neighbor about parties starting at eleven, those are parties inside the house. The design that we're proposing of taking the noise down into the back of the house should alleviate some of that, and there are no parties outside the house on the roof deck in either the current one we have now or the one we're proposing.
So the only reason you're here today is for the roof deck on top of the garage?
Yes, we, and it's the, we've wrestled with competing requirements in order to institute this project and satisfy ADA compliance.
Because, you know, generally, the issues we face is not the project, but bad behavior by students, you know? And so when you see, you know, students with park benches in the front yard or, you know, spilling over onto the sidewalk, it does change the quality of life for residents. And I think the question is, you know, how is it better monitored by whomever it is who needs to monitor it? Because there's nothing to preclude the internal renovation from happening and a, you know, show by the fraternity and the college of a good faith effort, and then, you know, there's an option to come in with the deck eventually. So there's ways of slicing this, but anyway, it's just me being on my little thing. So may I have a motion?
I just had a quick question, though. I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, is there security? Is there anybody there that is monitored besides cameras that I see that are going to be watching people?
Sure. So what the on-the-camera stuff we've added to the plans, as you've noted, the undergraduates, the Alumni House Corporation have also instituted now a third party, we'll call it security, handling the doors and the checking. And so I understand a neighbor has a photo from some time ago potentially, but we've still been doing that as a formal process now based on some of the conversations.
So how does that work? So I use my student ID to get in the door through an electronic process?
So what happens now is, or what is happening... So what happens now is, or what is happening is, we hire a third-party company who does the security for letting people in. They check the IDs, they check the guest list, they check the occupancy.
The person is onsite?
Yes. I believe there's two, and sometimes there's even three if it's needed, depending on what type of things is being held. So that's something that we're doing. Also, the difference I want to point out is that the reason we're doing all of these renovations and all these thoughts is to clean up some of these things that people have had issue with previously. So that's the reason for the designated space in the basement that we're talking about.
I just want to clarify, because this is a good question. As an employee of MIT, we do have secure, security systems in place, and I want to make sure that it's also emphasized that our policies do not even allow students to be on the roof deck for events of our partners. That's casual use only. We define that and clarify that with our students. So that was something that was not pointed out. Additionally, the MIT Police Department does several patrols around the neighborhood. They also supply every registered event which our office approves, and we're aware. Just want to make sure I get that one.
Yeah, just one thing on, so we're talking about the four people at a time, but that's four people together. So if I wanted to bring four, three people up there, then another group could have three people, is that?
After dark, it's a total.
The total people, okay.
So prior to dark, it's as many people as the occupancy allows?
Correct, as to the occupancy.
The area of the deck allows a maximum of forty-nine people, which I think is more than they could put up there, really, with furniture, so. But by building code, that would be the maximum occupancy.
So is there an option, then, to just have a smaller deck, so you don't have forty-nine people out there, you know, out there until eleven o'clock, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could limit the size a little bit farther. I mean, I'd like to point out that, as it's designed currently, it's held twelve feet back from the, from Back Street, so it's not really visible from Back Street. We have a ...
What about the abutter who has a young child?
Yeah. So there, in this view here, which is an aerial view, looking down on the proposed deck, this is a brick wall that separates their unit from our side. Part of the work that we're doing is repointing this wall also, to help seal it up, so that sound can't get through.
So what kind of buffer is there? Just point, repointing?
Yeah, it's just, on the outside, it's just repointing. Inside, we're doing, we're adding insulation to the walls down where the social space is. Out here, also, there, you know, there are no windows along this wall facing the deck. There are windows down at the end of this. And you can see, there are some photos that I added here. There's also some aerial views that show you how there are numerous similar roof decks on top of garages down Back Street. And then at the very back page, there's a, just a view from Back Street, so you can sort of see the situation, the location here.
So one last question without prolonging any here. I know that we need to come to a vote here, but what, I didn't see anything timeframe-wise. So we approved one at, down at Two International Place, a roof deck, but there are parameters on there, no winter deck, anybody's out there on the deck. Is there people out there in the wintertime as well?
I guess there currently could be. We hadn't envisioned that being the case. And if it's something that's helpful, we'd definitely entertain restrictions on seasonal use of the roof deck as well.
It's not very attractive in the wintertime, so that we ...
Well, kids do what they do.
Well, it's going to be that opportunity, people are going to go up there.
Correct. So yes, if that's something that would help in terms of restricting access during the wintertime, that is something that we will definitely entertain as the House Corporation.
I don't know, if it's a wintertime or a season time, to be very honest with you.
I mean, we just looked at outdoor seating from April fifteenth to October fifteenth, you know?
So if, for example, we're interested in doing something like that from kind of the April to October timeframe that you're discussing, then that's something that we'll be open to put as part of this project as well.
I just want to remind you that the primary reason we're doing this deck is for accessibility.
From us, from our perspective, it's an extension of a non-conforming use.
We understand.
And we just need to keep that, keep that focus on this. So given all this information, may I have a motion, please? And since this is an extension of a non-conforming use, we should just think clearly about what will make this work, if there's a motion for approval. But, you know, we can also entertain a motion for denial without prejudice, so the applicant can come back with a different version.
I'd like to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You've had our concerns, and, you know, you can come back within a year and figure something out, okay?
Calling the next case.
Call a deck or something.
Calling BOA 101-5422, 411 Sharmatt Avenue. Sharmatt Avenue here?
Yeah.
This is to add a new roof deck with spiral staircase, framed new skylight open, is replacing roof in renovated bathroom. This is building code only, by the way. The violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011. Stairways 1011.12.2. Roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof. Access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse, complying with section fifteen ten point two. Access through roof hatch is not permitted. Ninth edition 780 CMR 1011. Stairways 1011.3. Headroom, spiral stairway complying with section ten eleven point ten are permitted, and a seventy-eight inch headroom clearance. Headroom clearance is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Building code only.
My name is Adam Grassi, architect for the owner. Company's Huck Design, Portland, Maine.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
To recap, we are appealing a building code violation. We are proposing a hatch, which will limit or restrict the roof, the accessible height at a proposed spiral stair.
Because you were here the last time, and we needed to just make sure we were up to speed. Mr. Kandel, did you have a chance to look at everything on this request for building code relief?
Did not.
Okay. So you're asking for a leave from building code to put up a hatch?
I can walk you through briefly, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please.
Okay. We are proposing this hatch at the top of a proposed spiral stair, which will access a roof deck. The reason that we are proposing this hatch is because an interpretation of the South End zoning code determined that the only permissible roof decks in the South End are those that are accessed by a hatch or a headhouse. When we proposed a spiral stair from a lower deck to access this upper deck, it was rejected on the grounds that it was not accessed by a stair or a headhouse. The addition of this hatch resolved that problem. That also created the building code violation. To be clear, this hatch can be fixed in an open position and will present no hazard to the occupants of the building.
Okay. So may I have a motion on this, please, to grant building code relief?
Motion to grant building code relief.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 959027, 27 Thornley Street. There was a companion case. I'm going to call it in for the record, because it's still on here. BOA 956275 for building code, but building code is being withdrawn, so we don't need to go through that.
So do we need a motion for that? Or was it done last time, denied?
It was done, Plan's Examiner.
Okay, so it's, may I have a motion?
Motion to deny building code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So tell us about ...
This, I didn't, I didn't read it. I got to read it into the record. So this is the changes to fire protection and a new rear exterior staircase to replace inside stair, create storage areas in basement, not to be living space, change the second floor pantry to an open porch, create a third floor rear deck, change the first and second floors to open concept kitchens with LVLs and three bedrooms and baths. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano, open address of fifteen Broad Street. With me is the owner, Ellington Jackson, and the architect, John Garland, for the project.
So the real reason you're here is for that third floor rear deck?
Correct.
And what's the occupancy of the building?
So it's a three-unit condominium building. It was approved a while back in two thousand seventeen. This was an amendment to make some changes and add a deck to the back that included a rear egress stair. That caused us to be at twenty-one feet, one inch in our rear setback. Thirty is required.
So this project had initially, in two thousand seventeen, come before this board?
Correct.
Was there any proviso on that?
Just design review, Madam Chair, and there's ...
So what caused this rear egress stair violation, then?
So what it was is when the deck, so there are two existing decks on the first and second floor.
Yeah.
He was looking to match that on the third floor and then connect an egress stair for a sec, for another way out.
Second means of egress already, when the project was approved?
There was a second means of egress on the first floor. Building sprinklered, however, by adding that deck to the back, it caused us to trigger that rear violation. And what removed, the last time we were here, the real question was around the building code violation on this. And the reason that was corrected was we instituted a direct line sprinkler system as opposed to tanks. So the, that building code violation was removed. The egress stair still remains, and ISD had come out and asked that it actually stay on the property. Did it remain there as an additional safety feature, can, you know, access from the deck?
And what's the dimension of that deck?
About a hundred, yeah, a hundred and twenty feet, it looks roughly, about a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet.
And does it match the bottom two?
Correct, exactly the same.
Okay, how are the plans?
Drones are adequate.
I'm sorry?
Drones are adequate.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Van Del, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in full support of this project. There was an abutters meeting held on site, and he's worked with his abutters to accommodate all concerns.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 948-772-99 Brook Street. This is seeking to renovate the existing structure, change the occupancy from a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling, construct new dormers, expand living space to the basement and attic. The violation is Article fifty-one, section eight. Use of a two-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-one, section nine. The building height, number of stories, is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine. Side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section fifty-six. Our street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is ... Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Daniel Pascano from Drago and Tuscano, attorney at law. We're located at fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. To my mere right is the architect of the proposal at ninety-nine Brook Street, Benjamin Ling. And to my far right is the owner of the property, Ms. Chen. Ms. Chen purchased the property within the last year. The property has been vacant. It's a single-family. It's within a one F five thousand residential sub-district. What we're asking is approval to change this from a single-family to a two-family residential unit, which is going to be owner occupied for Ms. Chen and her son, who's going to occupy the second unit if approved. By applying for the renovations and the change of use, we encountered some zoning code violations that we're seeking relief. The first one is the use rate. It's a one F five thousand residential sub-district. The property currently sits on a ten thousand square foot lot, so there's plenty of open space and good size enough for a two-family. There are, across the street is a two-family residential sub-district. There's plenty of two families and three families, and also single families across the street. On the same side of our street, to our right, there's a single family and a number of single families, but also a number of two families. To our immediate left, and going down to the street, there are a number of ...
Tell us about the, I'm sorry, tell us about the dormers, the size of the dormers and how they would work?
I'll defer to Ms. Ling in regards to the size, but the dormers are going to be on the right side of the property, so if you're facing the property on the right side, it's just going to provide some additional living space that, that create that third story, which creates a violation. The height of the property is not changed, and it's going to remain at thirty-two feet, I think thirty-two nine. It's going to remain the same height, but it's going to create a third story. The attic space is going to be approximately a little bit over four hundred square feet, creating that, almost a duplex unit of a little above thirteen hundred square feet. In terms of the size, I'll pass it on to Mr. Ling in terms of the size.
So the second unit will have many bedrooms?
Well, it'll have three bedrooms. The three-bedroom, unit number one, is approximately fourteen hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand square feet of living space. It's a three-bedroom, two and a half bath. That's going to be occupied by Ms. Chen. That's upstairs and downstairs. On the downstairs level, you're going to have a bedroom and some family room space and bathrooms. On the first floor level, you'll have two bedrooms, living space and a bedroom. And then the unit number two is going to be approximately thirteen hundred square feet, which is a three-bedroom, two-bath. On the second level, you're going to have two bedrooms, kitchen and living space. And upstairs is just going to be a one-bedroom, occupy, just put a bedroom up there with some closet space. The added total number of living space that we are creating is approximately thirteen hundred square feet of living space for the entire property.
Can you tell us about the basement? What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
The floor-to-ceiling height currently is about seven-four. We are going to make adjustments to that to get it to about seven-six.
Okay. And there's a bedroom down there?
There is.
Will that have windows?
There are, currently, there are several windows that are all around the property, and they will remain. There'll be, there'll be windows.
Okay. And there looks like, does that have a deck on the roof of this building? Yes?
There is no proposed. Is there a note to a deck? No. No, no deck, no deck. No.
How are the plans? Any questions from the board?
Where are the utility rooms going to be in the new building, in the renovated?
Util, utilities.
Utility, currently showing on the ground floor.
Utilities are going to be?
Utility is going to be, say, outdoor units.
Are they going to be on the outside, like, the exterior of the property?
So will, so each unit will have a water heater, and that's going to be within each unit?
Each unit's going to have it.
Each unit, yeah, central units, yeah.
And so they don't have to cross units or ...
Yeah, it's separate, separate units, yes.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted an abutters meeting back on May thirtieth. They went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, also got their support as well. We're looking for the applicant being a good neighbor in the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, behalf of Counselor Seomo, Council Select and Go Record in Support.
Chairwoman, members of the board, Ann Balgonz from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We voted to support this.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
And that's with no code relief?
Yeah, no building code relief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, or all?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 875-587, twenty-five Bentley Street. This is demolition of an existing building and built, a structure for a three-family dwelling. The violation, Article fifty-one, section nine. The front yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine. The rear yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine. Floor area is excessive. Article fifty-one, section eight. A three-family dwelling unit is forbidden use. And Article fifty-three, section nine. The height is excessive in stories.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. Here representing Daniel Deichman, the owner of 25 Bentley Street, as well as Henry Baubec, the architect on the project. This is a proposal to raise the existing structure, a single-family structure, and erect a three-unit condominium building with six rear parking spaces on the site. The lot size, one of the larger lots in the area, are at 8,263 square feet. I will go over the layout. These are all three-bedroom, two-bath units, kitchen, living room, with smaller rear decks in the back. The sizes range from 1,600 to 1,720 square feet per unit. Our violations, as was mentioned, it is a 2F district, we're proposing three units. Our rear setback is 20. What's required is 30. Our front yard, we believe we meet at 21 now, because we were 20, which is required. And we are now at a .6 FAR, so both of those violations should be removed.
What is your violation, what is your FAR?
Point six.
And what's required?
Point six.
So you're meeting the FAR requirement, don't you?
Correct. Yeah, we've made a number of changes to the project over time. These originally were townhouses. Community asked that we do something else. We came back with more of a three-family looking building, and they asked us to have the pitched roof and a look like that. We also agreed to make these homeownership deed restricted units as well, in working with the BAIA. And so, along with our design changes for the front exterior of the building, I can answer any questions the board may have.
So, um, what part do you do?
It's a driveway access on the right side, Madam Chair. It goes into the rear, but there is still plenty of open space in the front and back quadrant of the building, shown on the site plan.
Uh, how are the plans, uh, done?
Drones are fine. I don't see any mechanicals.
There is a basement area that those will go, and then water heaters into units. Water heaters will all be in every unit.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted three abutters meetings. The applicant worked closely with constituents to address some of their concerns of changing, so that the character of the building matches with that of the neighborhood. Also, as I mentioned, deed restrictions, that was a big ask from the Civic Association, the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, and the residences themselves. Because they were able to agree to that, they were satisfied, and we'd like to go and support them.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Daniel Polanco, behalf of Counselor Seomo, Council Lieutenant Go, record in support as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We voted to approve this. We asked for a proviso for the homeownership be deeded.
Yes, that's usually something we cannot do, because we cannot go into ownership.
So that we ask that the attorney for the property owner write a contract?
With you?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five, a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene in a turn after 1:15.
1:15?
1:15, almost there. For the 1130s, and then we'll go ahead with the recommendations. Just a reminder, please, make sure your cellphones are off. And in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. So generally, when we have a room full of people, we know that there is a lot of people in support, a lot of people in opposition. What we will ask today is that first, is the, is the representative, excuse me, is the representative for Lincoln Street here? Please come have a seat at the table. What we ask is that the elected officials speak first, either in support or in opposition, in both cases. And that, in fact, we will listen to five people in support or in opposition. Okay, five people in each case. So you should think ahead of time about who's going to represent you, either in support or in opposition. Please give us new information. When you're up there, give us new information, because we are fact-finding. So use your time wisely. We will circulate a piece of paper, so that everybody who's here in this room can put their name and address down, so we know whether you're in favor or in opposition. We only want to hear about the merits of the case. Is this a good billboard? Is this billboard good for the community or not? Period, the end. I don't want to hear anything else, okay? So let's focus on that, and...
Madam Chair, the five people that are in the municipal organizations, or we exempt?
No, five people means five residences, but so civic organizations, of course, do get to, to, to represent community at a larger scale. Okay, so I think I've given every piece of information that I need to give. Mr. Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the last case of the day for case BOA 919-043-8894, Lincoln Street. This is to erect a 14-foot by 48-foot, two-sided digital billboard on a monopole. Violation is Article 51, Section 17, the height is excessive. Article 51, Section 17, the front yard, 51-52.1, street wall continuity, 51-57.2, CB, CDA. The Article 51, Section 55 billboards are forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Prince Lobel. I'm here today representing Maverick Media for the aforementioned. Maverick Media is a certified women's-owned business. Its principal, its president, is next to me, Val Barsom. The property in question at 88-94 Lincoln Street does lend itself to the relief that we're requesting, given its proximity to the Massachusetts Turnpike, the light pollution, the street noise, the access, the exhaust pollution affiliate with that. I had sent a previous memo to the board, so that you could have a little more information Friday, and I think you should have received that. It also complies with the 500-foot regulation that requires one billboard to not be within 500 feet of another billboard. And I think herein lies really the points we want to get into. There is, there is nearly a section of the Massachusetts Turnpike where you can find a 500-foot vacancy or opportunity for a new placement. So what separates this particular billboard from any other billboard, I think, is the good it will do for the surrounding community. I would say the first thing is that this is not a billboard that's being proposed by a large communication corporation. It's being proposed by a single individual, Val Barsom, who used to work in the industry, who learned about the industry, and one day said, you know, I can do this, and I'd like to do this, and that's what she's doing here today. And as a result, she went out into this community and did an exhaustive community outreach effort. And one of the packets I sent to you, I gave you your, the plans...
Can you please now talk to us about the merits of the case? Give us a description of what the billboard is, what building it's on. I'm assuming it's a new billboard? It's not replacing anything else?
That's correct. This is a two-sided billboard that would sit on a monopole on the property itself, next to a one-story existing building at 94 Lincoln Street.
And what is that building?
It's a industrial, one-story building. It's depicted...
Does the business have a name?
What is the name of the business? American Cleaning Company.
Okay.
And they're currently operating.
This will be on their site?
That's correct. This would be a lease on their site. The billboard is angled in such a way that if you go to the last page of the packet I provided to you, the technology, it's this, this page, this last, the smaller page.
Counselor, before I forget, sorry for all the interruptions.
Nope, no problem, no problem.
That for this project to be approved, you need five affirming votes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that.
Absolutely.
We're a six-member board today.
Yep, and we will be proceeding with that knowledge. Thank you. I think what's interesting about this billboard is that it contains a certain technology that you don't see... that you don't see light emanating from it from an angle. You really only see it from dead-on because of the way the LEDs are set into the structure themselves. And the last page shows you the difference between the old technology and the new technology. You really don't see it when you're on escance to it. And so as a result of Val's efforts to reach out to this immediate community, we were able to, you know, we fully acknowledge there's, there are, there is some opposition, but we were able to reach out and get letters of over three hundred and, around three hundred and fifty.
Before we go into the process...
Okay, sure.
So this is a fourteen by forty-eight foot, the billboard is going to be proposed to be fourteen by forty-eight. Is that right? I'm looking, I'm looking at it, and how tall is that pole?
It's sixty feet tall.
So sixty feet, so...
To the...
So it's sixty...
To the top of the board, that's correct.
So it, to the top of the board?
Yeah, A dash one point one. That's correct.
Okay.
And we, in fact, she actually lowered it, I think, by five feet through the community process so that it comes down a little bit.
Okay.
What's the top of the building?
The top of the building is twenty feet.
So it's a good forty feet above the building?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
And I know there are certain regulations about the amount of light. Tell us about that.
Yeah.
Brightly lit they are, and are you going to have public service announcements or anything like that?
Yeah, I think that's the key to this particular proposal. In terms of the light, I mentioned to you that you will not see the light if you're standing off to the side, given the technology. So the light will be directed directly onto the inbound and outbound sides of the Massachusetts Turnpike. This particular proposal has a hundred hours, is it a hundred hours over the course of a month, which is well beyond the industry standard of any other company, that will give back to community-based organizations.
I don't want, I, I'm not, I'm not interested in that. I just want to know, like, what percentage, because, because we are here to look at the merits of the billboard itself as a structure. So, so tell us about your public service announcement out of, you know, a hundred percent.
There's state, and, Madam Chair, on the lighting, it's point oh-three-foot candles, which is all regulated by the state.
Yeah.
And the, the PSAs are also regulated by the state. You have to give a certain percentage. I believe it's fifteen hours a month for the state, but we are going beyond that, as I said, you know, not to be repetitive, that we're giving a hundred hours a month, which is basically one flip of the board. We're giving one digital flip to the community, to the city.
And is that peak hours or not?
It's the whole, it's however long it's running. It's, it's not going to be designated for hours as, as, you know, it's, you know, some...
And then, and then I know, I know that this board has approved certain billboards in the past, like, like at the W and other locations, by Fenway Park, for example, and residents have complained about it being too blurry. So how is that going to be controlled?
Well, so then there's this new light-blocking technology that Michael spoke about.
Okay, so it's like locking?
And it's, it's a, it's an, it's an added feature that you put on the boards. It's more expensive, but it's something that is done regularly now. It's called light, light sightline technology, and that's what we're going to implement as well.
Do we have a picture of what it would look like? I see the, you know, obviously the great pictures of the Warrior Arena across the way at the Mass Pike, but do we have anything that shows where it would be on the property?
Well, I mean, the best I have are the, the three sets of plans.
Right, I see that, but it really doesn't, you know, obviously doesn't show the height, looking what it would look like, and obviously the illumination.
Yeah, you know, since I've taken this case, I've been driving, when I drive down the Mass Turnpike, I've noticed now all these billboards. And it's going to take its place, really, in the, in the order of, of all the billboards on the, on the Massachusetts Turnpike, so that when viewed from the Turnpike, it will be right up at, around the height, sixty feet is right up around the height of what the other billboards are and where they're set. And it will just kind of feed its way into that, that rhythm of what's happening on the Turnpike. The, the thing that's different is it's the digital billboard, and so unlike just a static billboard that has a one, one page, I mean, that advertises an ad, public service announcements, emergency announcements, and things that are now more than ever, I think, needed in the community will be, will be broadcast on that and the other boards as you go. And so in a miniature city, it's not uncommon, especially a place where the Mass Turnpike runs through it, to, to have these types of communication devices there. I, I wish I had a, a kind of an artist's rendering of what it's going to look like, but, but it will take its, it will take its place similar to what you see there now. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, in this packet I sent you ahead of time, there were, I, I did, I provided a map that showed, I think, thirty-nine billboards that have been approved in the last few years through this board. And some are digital and some are static, certainly not limited to those three small areas within Fenway Park and downtown. And I think that makes sense because the desire to have this type of network of communication along the entire Turnpike for visitors and tourists and residents is, it makes sense. It's, it's the, the need for information is being driven outside of just a certain set area within the city, and that's why you're seeing these, these applications coming before you. The reason why I keep coming back to the community process is because it's substantial. It's not, it was not just something that was done just to cover bases. It was done, I would, I would suggest that people in this room are not evenly split. The majority of this room is in favor of this application. We, we lost Counselor Garrison, who was here, that she dropped off her packet of letters of support. She was going to be here to support this application in person because of the number of emails, emails, letters that she received into her office. And so we wanted to point that out because it's indicative of the level of effort and outreach that Val has done with her company to, to reach out to the very people who will benefit from being noticed on this board.
So just to clarify for my fellow board members, the Alston-Brighton zoning makes billboards a forbidden use, and that has pretty much carried through to quite a number of neighborhoods. I think neighborhood residents, long-term neighborhood residents can say, can speak to how many have been approved and the time that the zoning went into effect in ninety-one. So anything else you'd like to inform us about? Because then we can go and get some testimony.
Sure, maybe I can come back on the backside of that if that's okay.
Okay, excellent. Is anybody here to speak in support? And we would like to have elected, elected, elected officials or representative of elected officials to speak, and then have representatives, civic associations, and then community members.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of District Council Large, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support. The proponent went through an extensive community process and has gained over three hundred signatures in support, and not to mention the support of the newly organized civic association, North Brighton Alston Civic Group. Like to mention that there have been, that there is opposition to this billboard, but the council's opinion that the support from the Director Butters and the proponent's commitment to engage and promote community groups and associations significantly outweighs the opposition in this matter. Therefore, at this time, he'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. My name is Steve Tompkins. I'm the Suffolk County Sheriff. There are several reasons why I'm in support of this initiative, principally because a billboard would speak to what's going on in my world. My world is dominated by people that have substance abuse issues, mental health issues, educational issues. And so to have a billboard on the, on the, on the highway that speaks to the need for people to really roll up their sleeves and work with us and work with others to address this very grievous situation with opiate exploitation, as well as mental health issues, as well as educational issues. Unfortunately, unfortunately, my department is a de facto mental health, substance abuse, and education facility. And so therefore, having public service announcements on the highway serves us well. This is something that we have done in the past, and that has also served us well. Secondarily, I'm here to support Val Barsom, who is a friend of mine, who is working mightily to get this information out. I don't speak to the commercial side, that's none of my business, but I do speak to the citizens that I have to work with and care for in Suffolk County. And so if this is a way that we can get messaging out, particularly to our youth, to stay out of trouble, to stay out of harm's way, and to stay out of my facilities, I'm all for that. So therefore, I also support this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Carino. I'm a business agent at Payne's in Allied Trades, District Council Thirty-Five. I represent the sign of Pictoro, Local Three-Ninety-One. Maverick Media has made a commitment to conform to community area standards on wages and benefits. Maverick Media is in the process of signing, they will be a signatory contractor and with Local Three-Ninety-One. So for the record, District Council Thirty-Five is in support of this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Chairman of the Board, Chairman. My name is Hung Goon. I represent the North Brighton Alston Civic Group. We formed recently because we feel this billboard is near our property, and there's a lot of issues we need to take care of, like, we, we meet with Chinese and English so that for a lot of the people that lives in the neighborhood, that's...
Excuse me, sir, can you tell me about the reason for your support for this particular billboard?
Okay, so we support what Maverick Media is going to provide, the sound barrier along Lincoln Street and the road control that we have issues with in the neighborhood. And also, they're going to provide a public message there, and with Alston-Brighton, there's a lot of Chinese-speaking people, so that her signs, like, could make it Chinese sign with English so far, all could understand if there's an emergency. So I'm here to represent those people that support it, they're from my group, so hopefully, thank you.
Good morning, or should I say good afternoon now? I want to echo what Sheriff Tomp...
Hold on for one minute. Put your name and address on the record.
Sure. My name is John Hoffman.
Yeah.
I'm a lifelong resident of Alston-Brighton, sixteen Adia Road, and I've been running youth programs for forty years in Alston-Brighton, and I wanted to echo what Sheriff Tompkins had said. For the past sixteen years, I've been director of the Fishing Academy Charity, and we work with the Boston Police. We've taken over seven thousand kids from the Boston area.
So your, your support, so you're a resident and you're in support of this?
I am in support. One of the things we teach...
I just need to talk about the billboard, okay?
Yes, but I want to give the reasons why I supported this well. We teach an anti-drug and alcohol message with our partners from the Boston Police Department, and I'm here today, the main reason I'm here is the proponents of the billboard saved a family member of mine's life, saved his life, okay? And so I'm very passionate about that. We've lost a lot of kids to a terrible disease in the Alston-Brighton community, and to me, the word "community" means helping people, not turning your back on people that need help the most...
Sir, I have to stop you, please, okay? You can see there's a room full of people...
Right.
And there are others in line, so thank you for, because I think you're, it's clear that you're echoing the sentiments of the sheriff, so we get it, we understand.
Well, not just the sheriff, but the three hundred people from that neighborhood and the many families that have lost somebody in that neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Luke. I live at fifteen Caltha Road in Brighton.
Okay.
I just went over this, looking, this, I guess I've been a resident of Brighton for forty-nine years and, God willing, another fifty.
Okay.
I grew up in Brighton. I've been very active in the community, in Little League, softball, presentation schools, et cetera, okay?
Could tell us about the reason...
And like I said, the neighborhood...
So please tell us what your support is based...
Did someone have a question back there?
No, I, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Concentrate your, your comments right here and tell us the reason for your support.
Here's my reason, okay? As growing up in Brighton, coaching in various sports activities in Brighton, I've seen Alston-Brighton change so much, going from three Little Leagues down to one Ice Hockey, et cetera.
Tell us about the billboard.
What happens is with the billboard, it's going to enable the community to see what's out there, and with the activity that Mavericks want to give back into the community, I feel that it's very, it's going to be a very game-changing situation for the community whereby we can get more youths back into the groups knowing what's, what's out there available for them, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So this is, you are resident number three?
I am a former resident, three generations in Alston.
Okay, put your name and address on the record, please.
Rob Jelly.
Okay, and your address?
My address is in Melrose, Mass, two eighty-first Street.
Okay, and tell us what your support is based on?
I am supporting Maverick Media. As I said, I'm a third generation.
And it's fine just to say you're in support?
Right.
So that's, because everybody else may have already stated the reason for support.
Yeah, for me, it's a little simpler. The Mass Pike came through, divided our community, I think it's time they give back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm BJ. I'm the CEO of Granada House, that's a recovery home located right over there on Seventy Adamson.
Yeah.
And I'm more interested in the public service announcements and helping us to accept our residents in the community and getting some respect for them. It's absolutely necessary that they are accepted, so thank you.
Thank you. And we have room for one more resident who wants to speak in support, okay? Is any, is, okay, so please put your name and address on the record.
Hi, my name's Doug. I live on eighty-three Antwerp Street, right off of Lincoln.
Yeah.
So I'm in support of this billboard because along the Lincoln Street, there's a bunch of billboards, but I haven't seen any added benefits that these companies have provided for us. And Val reached out to us in our, in our neighborhood and is helping us build our community better. And I specifically want it because I would like a sound barrier built along the Mass Pike and our rodent issues. I went to a school at BU, both undergrad and grad school, and that part of Alston-Brighton is called Rat City for a reason. So I would like those issues taken care of, and I think this is a good company to work with. They've done a good job reaching out to us.
Thank you. Okay, so now is, people who are speaking in opposition, may I have representatives of elected officials first, community organizations next, and then five residents, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We conducted an extensive community process. We received feedback from a number of residents. We had a Butters meeting back in July. The applicant has made great efforts to engage members of the community. However, upon reviewing our process with our office, we feel we cannot go on record in support of this proposal. There's a number of concerns from residents and civic associations. I'll let them speak to that, but we're on record in, in opposition.
Thank you.
What exactly was the opposition? I'm sorry. What were they, what were they opposed to?
The civics and the... Oh, they're here as well.
No, the mayor's office, when the, for the community feedback.
Yeah, just in light of, of the process, the residents that we've heard of, you know, we don't feel that this is the right move for the neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Blanco, on behalf of Counselor Mark Ciomo, counsel elected on record in opposition. Members of the board, on behalf of Counselor Ciomo, who couldn't make it today due to the scheduling conflict, he'd like to extend your gratitude to all the board members that have definitely served our city during the counselor's twelve-year in office. The city's growth and prosperity during the recent economic boom has been possible in no smart part, but because the voted, the voted board members, both past and present. Today will be the final time our office will be testifying before this board as District Nine City Counselor. Counselor is thankful for your thoughtful deliberation over hundreds of cases that you've heard over this time in our office, and for the deference and respect that you've treated our staff in our neighborhood. And as for myself, being here for seven years, I've learned a lot, and I'm thankful for your service and working alongside.
So I'm going to put you on the spot. Support, opposition?
In, in opposition.
Okay. Daniel, please give the counselor our best from all the board, and we hope we'll see you around because you've added a lot of value over the years as you've come to this board and we've watched you mature and the way you give us all good information. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at Large in East society, Georgia's office, and she would like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We voted again against this billboard. The, your board voted last year against this billboard. They're back again. It is in Article fifty-one, a forbidden use. It's not replacing a non-conforming grandfather billboard. It's a brand-new one. Our major concern is opening the door for more billboards to be built with, going against Article fifty-one. If you approve it, it should be changed in the zoning code against a forbidden use. Right now, it's a forbidden use... Right now, it's a forbidden use. Our community is against it. Val did a great job outreach-ing, and she did reach a lot of community members, and we respect their opinions, but this is more about going against something in Article Fifty-One that is a forbidden use. If we're changing it, we should change the Article Fifty-One. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. I'm actually going to stick to the merits of the proposal, except in one instance. They mentioned building a sound barrier on Lincoln Street as part of the Alston I-Nine E. project. That is going to happen on Lincoln Street. The state's going to pay for it, and it's already in the plan, so. And road and control, there's a very robust Three-One-One system in the city. Residents should take advantage of that. We are very prideful at the Alston Civic Association that we have sort of rebuilt the organization where we're getting now a very diverse group. We're getting roughly fifty to seventy people a month to show up at the meeting, and it cuts right across the entire community. So we feel like we're a much more representative body than we've ever been before. That evening, we had forty-eight voting members there. The vote was forty-eight to nothing, and it cut across all racial lines. It cut across young, old, longtime residents, homeowners, renters, you name it, forty-eight to nothing. I also want to bring to your attention that right now, undergoing Article Eighty review, twenty feet away from the site, is a proposal for a thirty-two-unit condominium building that you'll be hearing about fairly soon at One Hundred to One Hundred-Ten Lincoln Street. The reason why I mention it is not just because it's going to be next door and you're going to have a sixty-foot billboard right beside it. On the front of the property, by the way, my good friend, Councilor Ross, didn't get too specific on that. It actually sits on the front of the property.
So, Tony, just keep, please keep to...
Yes, I'm going to keep to the thing. So, so I, so that's important to note, and the reason why I note this is the Lincoln Street corridor, I think as the chair, Madam Chair knows, is transforming. The Lincoln Street corridor abuts an existing residential community, and now what's happening is with various projects, Harvard University, Penniman Street, this project that's coming up, Lincoln, the condo project, even the corridor is getting more residential. So the community is changing, and my understanding was the city and state doesn't like putting billboards in a residential community. And just a couple more notes, because I know there's a number of people that want to come forward. What people don't realize is that even though the majority of the site is Zone NS-One, if you look at the back portion of the site, there's a small section of it that's actually in a three or four thousand sub-district. So it's actually in a residential sub-district. So the thought process about the progress that this neighborhood has made, and to put a billboard in this location certainly would have a negative impact on that neighborhood in terms of property values and their efforts to bring the community back. So I think it's important. And then the final point I'll just make is, Madam Chair and members of the board, we have yet to meet the owner of the property. As you notice, he is not here today. If he was so confident that this project benefited the Alston Brighton community, he'd be out engaging us and gushing as to the contribution he's making to our community. He doesn't have the guts to show up in public and meet the neighborhood.
Just don't, please, don't. So I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm looking at this map, and...
Yes.
Once you talked about One Hundred to One Hundred-Ten Lincoln Street, didn't the Mormon Church also get approval to, for their, for a house there?
No, go a little further down, Madam Chair. At the corner of Lincoln Street and Everett Street is the Church of Scientology.
Yes, so the Church of Scientology, the Scientologists, okay?
That's right.
And then across the street, Stop and Shop.
From them is Harvard U... Oh, yes, Stop and Shop.
And I hear, you know, just saw something in the papers about Stop and Shop...
That got approved.
Putting that residential up there.
And at the corner of Harvard and Everett, Madam Chair, Harvard University is ground leasing to Berkeley Investments. You know that shell of a building that has been up for twenty years?
Then there's a couple of...
That's going to be...
Yeah, a couple of residences that have been proposed.
That's correct.
Market and the...
Penniman Street, I mean...
Yep, okay.
Mount, Birmingham Park, at the corner of Birmingham and Lincoln Street, is a condo building going up there as well. So there's significant change taking place in that area, and we look upon this as a step backwards, Madam Chair. We want you and the board to help us move this community forward, especially this neighborhood, and a billboard would be taking a major step backwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, is it the residents here, five residents?
No, I represent the Brighton-Alston Community Coalition.
Okay.
And I just, before I begin, I just want to make sure you have the two visuals that I... My name's Joanne Del Como. I'm Vice Chair of Brighton-Alston Community Coalition, which was formed in early 2018. We have hundreds of members, all residents of Alston or Brighton. We are against the, this billboard proposal that is a repeat of the one rejected on May Twenty-third, 2017, and we are against it for the following reasons. One is that it would distort the whole process for granting variances. And why do we say this? We say this because the specific legal criteria require that the proponent prove that there are special circumstances or conditions at the property such that the use of the property would be deprived of the reasonable use of the land or structure without the variance.
So ma'am, can you tell us other reasons? Because we know what the standards are in the zoning code. Is there anything else you want to add?
Yes, because there has been a business there successfully for many years. The current owner has owned the building since 1997. It's Ninety-four Lincoln LLC, and that same owner, this cross-ownership, Joseph Sullivan, who's the manager of that LLC, also is the manager of American Cleaning Company, which has been operating successfully for many years. So the whole premise of the zone, of the granting of variances, that the reasonable use of the land be, that one be deprived of it if you don't have a variance, that you need it for the reasonable use of the land, it would make a mockery of the granting of variances if this board were to say that the land couldn't be reasonably used without this variance because it has been for many years, and the owner isn't here to say otherwise. Another, another reason is, is that totally apart from the fact that the proponent has not met its burden, and the proponent has the burden, of establishing that legal, those legal criteria are met, you see in the visuals where the billboard is proposed for and how it is right up against a very dense residential neighborhood. And then we also show you, because I don't believe that the submission does show you, a billboard, we show you an example of a fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight billboard structure, electronic billboard structure, that was approved to replace a static structure. This is the exact same size as is being proposed here, and this is what, this is what...
Is this the one on Braintree Street?
No, it's Two-Ninety-Six North Beacon.
Okay.
And it is the exact same dimensions, and this is what the people in the residential area would have to look at, and all of us would have to. I've lived in Brighton for, since 1977, and I travel in that area a lot. This is what we'd have to look at. It would degrade and cheapen the area. It would not serve the public to have that...
Thank you, ma'am.
...ugly structure.
Thank you so much. May I have the next resident, please?
Just one more thing. We urge you to deny this with prejudice, so it doesn't just come back a few months later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kevin Cleary, and I'm probably the only a butter here.
What's your address?
Seven South Waverly Street.
Okay.
I've lived at that address for ten years, and I'm not going to echo what everybody else has said. I'm going to try to give you some insight as to what it's like to live at that corner, the intersection of Lincoln Street and South Waverly Street. And for many years, it's a neglected corner, okay? We deal with excessive traffic because Lincoln Street is a cut-through for everybody that gets off the Mass Pike and wants to go to Newton or Watertown or other parts of Brighton and doesn't want to sit in traffic. We deal with abandoned vehicles. We deal with trash.
So tell me about the billboard.
The billboard is going to be a setback to this. The neighborhood is currently going through a renaissance.
Okay.
It's very popular. Tony cited a condo building on the opposite corner. Things are improving here, and for those of us that have lived there for ten years who've spent thousands of dollars on road and control, have improved our property...
Listen, for people out here, the man has the mic. Let him speak, okay? Be respectful, okay?
Yeah, we're not, and I'm in support of that project. That's an advancement to the neighborhood.
Okay.
This is not.
Okay.
And what, if you look at the case currently in Waymouth, where the city is trying to buy out the current owner of a billboard because it's so disruptive to the neighborhood, you know...
Okay.
It's irreversible if you approve this.
Thank you.
So I respectfully ask for you not to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is John Woods. I'm the Executive Director of the Alston Brighton Community Development Corporation. The Alston Brighton Community Development Corporation has been around for forty years with a mission of trying to improve the quality of life in the Alston Brighton neighborhoods. This proposal submitted to install the digital billboard on Lincoln Street reflects the opposite of that effort to improve the quality of life for the residents of Alston Brighton CDC. In fact, it actually contributes to the decay of the quality of life in the neighborhood surrounding the proposed billboard. It runs counter to the ongoing efforts to create a vibrant community, to preserve and enhance the landscape and sense of neighborhood that the residents have been striving to create and maintain. I fully understand the very compelling and generous offers that have been made to a number of community groups to help them continue the important work that they're doing, and although I can sympathize with the fact that those resources may not be available if, in fact, this doesn't go through, I would strongly recommend that the proponent still think about making those contributions that be as generous as possible.
Yeah, just so that you know, relief is not for sale. We need to hear about the merits, so please, if there's more that you need to add...
All right, I'll close by, I'll close by saying there is no compelling reason to contradict the prohibition of billboards now in Article Fifty-One, and I urge you to reject the proposal.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Bob Peszek. I live at Nine High Rock Way in Alston, lived there in Alston since 1981, and I'm here to express opposition to the billboard. My wife, Nancy Grill, couldn't be here today, but she submitted a longer comment than I'm going to make. Basically, it's a forbidden use. We were here two months ago. We thought that might be the end of it, by the way. Isn't, I guess. It's not allowed, it's not needed, and I think it sends a message of disrespect to our community that you could stick something up in the air sixty, seventy feet that can be seen for miles, and it's a good thing. It's not. We don't need it, and just, but everyone has iPhones if they need to get messages of whatever sort. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
A few responses if I could. Number one, while during the conversations, my client leaned over to me, and based on some of the questions we got from the board and some of the comments we heard, she's telling me that we are now comfortable removing the height by an additional five feet, lowering it to a maximum of fifty-five. So if this was to be approved, we would accept a proviso that said to not exceed fifty-five feet, based on some of the comments we heard. The other thing I'd like to just talk about is the, I understand the comments that were made, and a lot of good friends were talking. I think that the issue is if Boston was removing all its billboards, we would have some, I think, nerve coming here in front of you. I think you heard in one of the comments that a larger company could come, remove some of its static billboards in exchange for doing a digital billboard. That is what has been happening, that, those are the circumstances in which billboards have been approved. Val doesn't have a large company. She doesn't have other billboards to trade. Those other billboards, frankly, aren't nearly as valuable as a digital billboard that'll go on the Massachusetts Turnpike. I do not believe for a second that there will not be a billboard there within the next few years on Mass, on the Turnpike. It is the last spot on the Pike, and it will probably be controlled by a large company who can actually play the, "I'll get rid of seven boards and I'll put one there." She cannot do that because she is a single woman-owned business.
So we, we don't care about finances, you know? We, we are here to look at it from a purely land-use perspective.
Understood.
It's a variation from the zoning, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the variation.
So let's just talk about, you know, what it means from a community perspective.
Absolutely.
So there's, I'm glad there was clarity that the buffering is being provided by the Mass Pike or by whomever, and so this...
I'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into the mitigation piece, but it was raised by the, by both sides. We, we are committed to putting a sound barrier and to do road and control in the immediate area. The sound barrier may or may not ever happen. I think you all know that large statewide projects, everything, they can be delayed, they can be changed. Are the applicants prepared to invest that immediately now? If there's leftover funds in that project, they can extend the sound barrier further down into Alston. We think it would be, we are prepared to pay for that. We've made that commitment. In terms of the use, and a lot of comments were made about the fact that this is a forbidden use. The same forbidden use was put into place along this area and along this corridor for other projects that were named, other condominium projects, other residential projects, and they too received relief. And I believe that the reason why the relief was warranted there, as it would be warranted here, it's the same variance that's being requested, a certain height, height variances, dimensional variances, use variances, is because there's a Massachusetts Turnpike that literally goes through our city. And as a result, these abutting parcels have to get variances in order to be built, almost nine times out of ten. The larger projects that you described all enjoyed relief. Granted, it's a different project, it's not a billboard they're approaching as, but it's the same variances that are being applied. So by that standard, I think it's safe to say that variances along this section of the city are in order. And I'd probably maybe just close with submitting the signatures of eight-hundred-and-fifty, signatures of support, and to draw your attention to the fact that one of the, one of the people who spoke in opposition to this is actually on a billboard in, in that neighborhood.
Now, please, don't go there.
But, I mean, it's...
I'm weary.
Okay, all right. I'm going to close. I close.
And please respect my weariness.
I hear you. The holidays can't come soon enough for all of us.
I know, you said that earlier.
It is true. It is a true statement.
So, okay, so we have a lot of information in support and opposition, and so may I have a motion, please?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, please, please.
The variance would go only with this applicant, so once the land lease was done, would it go away, or would it be permanent to the land?
It would be with this application. So, so there's, but, but, you know, the, the history is that, in fact, this has been a forbidden use in Alston Brighton since ninety-one, and I think the only billboards I, community, you guys can talk about this, but in fact, as you've described, you know, X number of billboards got, got removed because it was seen as a blight in some ways to replace, be replaced by a, by a digital billboard, you know, but...
But we would accept a proviso, saying for this applicant only. I mean, there's this, there's this theory out there that Val is going to take the billboard and sell it the second she is willing...
Yeah, the thing is, I've struggled with this applicant only because enforcement has been hard, and, you know, you know, so, so we've been moving away in certain cases from this applicant only because, because of enforcement.
Understood. We would still accept that as a proviso.
Okay. So, so may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve for this applicant only, no higher than, with proviso, this applicant only, no higher than fifty-five feet.
Is there a second?
In design review, please.
In design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I too am opposed, so the motion doesn't carry. It's been denied. Okay, thank you, everybody. We still have other items on our agenda, so we would like you to help us out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to continue on the zoning advisory subcommittee. On Thursday, we met December twelfth of 2019, Ten-Ten Mass Ave, Fifth Law. Case BOA five-seven-five-two-eight-one-thirty-one, Appleton Street, was withdrawn, so it was denied with all prejudice. Case BOA 1004905777, East Broadway, was widen the existing curb cut by five feet and add two off-street parking, it was denied with all prejudice. Case BOA 1018358, 170 to 174 West Broadway. This was a change of legal use and occupancy of an existing restaurant and add restaurant with live entertainment, it was approved. Case BOA 97683545 Dell Avenue, it was to install two entry doors and kitchen and complete requirements for a two-family, it was approved. Case BOA 9905768 West Cart Street, it was three-vehicle parking, it was approved. Case BOA 1006111, 18 Spalding Street, this was to build a shed dormer on the side of the building, extend dormer in the rear of the building, it was approved with no building code relief. Case BOA 1008861726 Hyde Park Avenue, it was to remove the first floor rear deck, construct a new first and second floor rear deck, it was approved. Case BOA 100536049 Metropolitan Avenue, it was a rear and front addition, new dormers, it was approved. Case BOA 1015938, Two Prospect Avenue, it was legalize occupancy of a two-family dwelling and renovate the third floor walk-up attic and add a dormer, it was approved. Case BOA 1000455288, Watch Houston Street, it was a small addition of 54.5 square feet inside kitchen, it was approved. Case BOA 100436537 to 39 Aldrich Street, it was add a shed dormer, it was built in 37 feet long, it was approved. Case BOA 100156690 Cass Street, it was proposed two-off-street parking to, on existing two-family dwelling, install a 48-inch high driveway retaining wall, it was approved. Case BOA 101226448 Sheffield Road, it was two-off-street parking, it was approved. Case BOA, BOA 1009854135 School Street, it was deferred to the subcommittee on 1/23/2020. Case BOA 96403088 Sycamore Street, it was to build a two-and-a-half-story addition in the rear of an existing two-family, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 9723235768 Cheshire Street, it was a finished basement and erect two-by-four walls and perimeter, it was approved. That concludes the subcommittee report.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is now adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.